Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303 or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers a family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with dock, rowboats, and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool and kiddie pool. Relax in our waterfront and beachside accommodations. 548-4747 or gogreenharbor.com.
Welcome to the open session for the Board of Selectmen meeting Monday, September 11, 2017. First thing on the agenda is executive session. I'm going to make a motion that we go into executive session under General Laws 30A, Section 21a3, and A6 with respect to discussing resolution of all turbine litigation as the first issue. The second, collective bargaining, DPW, ASME, and Fire Department Unions discuss and vote terms and conditions of contracts. And lastly, negotiation status with respect to 350 Old Barnstable Road. And as Chair, I declare that to not go into executive session would impair the town's position on those issues. And after executive session, we will return to open session.
Second?
Thank you. By roll call?
Brown, aye.
Patterson, aye.
English Braga, aye.
Moran, aye.
Jones, aye.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm going to call to order the resumption of the open session after the executive session for September 11, 2017, and ask if you'd all rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a proclamation, two of them, for Eagle Scout. The first is Zach Bowerman.
Got me reading?
Please.
This is a pleasure, since I was a scout leader when Zach was in the troop at the same time, so I know him well. Glad to be able to read this proclamation. And we practically got these memorized. We've had so many coming through recently, which is really a nice thing to see. Whereas Zach R. Bowerman of Boy Scout Troop 40 has successfully completed the qualifications for the rank of Eagle Scout, a rigorous and demanding process that teaches patience, perseverance, and teamwork, and requires strong goal-setting. And Zach R. Bowerman met these challenges with aplomb and shall be recognized as an outstanding representative of his family, his troop, and Falmouth. And the Boy Scouts of America, long acknowledged for building fine citizens, calls for a special court of honor to award its highest symbol of achievement to those who complete this rank. And whereas Zach R. Bowerman is now an Eagle Scout with all its rank and privileges, now therefore we, Susan L. Moran, Megan English Braga, Doug Jones, Samuel H. Patterson, and Douglas C. Brown, as selectmen of the Town of Falmouth, do hereby declare and proclaim Saturday, September 23, 2017, as Zach R. Bowerman Day throughout the Town of Falmouth. In witness thereof, we have hereunto set our hand and caused the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed. Second?
Congratulations.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Would you like to just come up and mention your project for us?
Sure. So for my project, I worked with the 300 Committee to create a series of trail map boxes throughout Town of Falmouth on various trails. I worked with Michael Duffney in his shop, and we created 10 trail map boxes for the trails throughout 300 Committee's land through Falmouth.
And whose idea was the project?
It was a collaboration between me and the outreach leader through the 300 Committee.
That's great. That's going to be used by a lot of people. Terrific project, and congratulations. That's a really big accomplishment, in addition to all the others you're wearing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Zach.
Mr. Patterson, next.
And well, Mr. Patterson gave this one to me for Mr. Bianchi. And the proclamation, whereas Jared A. Bianchi of Boy Scout Troop 42 has successfully completed qualifications for the rank of Eagle Scout, a rigorous and demanding process that teaches patience, perseverance, teamwork, and requires strong goal-setting. And whereas Jared A. Bianchi met these challenges with aplomb and shall be recognized as an outstanding representative of his family, his troop, and his community. And whereas the Boy Scouts of America, long acknowledged for building fine citizens, calls for a special court of honor to award its highest symbol of achievement to those who complete this rank. And whereas Jared A. Bianchi is now an Eagle Scout with all its rank and privilege, we now therefore, we, Susan L. Moran, Megan English Braga, Doug Jones, Samuel H. Patterson, and Douglas C. Brown, as selectmen of the Town of Falmouth, do hereby declare and proclaim Sunday, September 17, 2017, as Jared A. Bianchi Day. In witness thereof, we have hereto set our hand and caused the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed. Congratulations.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Bianchi, would you mind coming to the podium to describe your project for us?
Of course. So my Eagle project, I painted the lodge of St. Anthony's Church, the basement of it. I painted five rooms in the hallway there. And it was a rigorous course. It took us about five workdays to completely finish it. And one of the requirements that I had for this was I wanted us as scouts do a really good job for the church, almost look professional, so people can go down there and be like, wow, the scouts did that. And I also chose the project because I have been using that building there for all my scouting years through Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts over 10 years, and I wanted to give back to the community.
That's great. And it really needed it. As someone who's been down there, it was ready. So thank you.
And you've made your mark.
That's great.
It's one of our polling places now, as well.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You'll be taking your kids there someday, telling them how you painted that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations to both of you.
Recognition, Ms. Braga.
So just certainly in light of the fact that we're commemorating 16 years since September 11, and also in recognition of really the devastating natural disasters that we've seen in the last couple of weeks, for recognition this week, we really just want to focus on recognizing the role of first responders, our firefighters, our police officers, paramedics, certainly the doctors and nurses who respond in these disasters, whether they're man-made or natural, and also the everyday citizens who step up and really help in their communities. It's, you know, certainly whether it's September 11th, or what we've seen in Houston, Florida, and in the Caribbean, it takes such effort to really knit communities back together after those devastating circumstances. So we just want to recognize the role of all of our first responders and those everyday citizens who step up. So just a moment of silence and recognition.
Thank you. And I just want to mention as well that really was an important ceremony this morning at the fire station. And your chief, Small, your words were very appreciated by the whole community. People were going by with cell phone video, and young scouts were there, and you really did a great job letting them participate. So very important for the community. Thank you very much. I have a couple of announcements that folks have asked me to make. On September 14, at 11:15, there's a recognition of Suicide Prevention Day by the Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition. It's an annual ribbon ceremony, and it's at the Barnstable Superior Court front lawn. Eversource has sent notice that they will be spraying, so just be aware that that's going on, and obviously stay away from those chemicals as much as you can. There's an announcement by Veterans Transportation Program. Beginning in 2017, there will be available to Falmouth-born and Martha's Vineyard-area veterans transportation. The contact is Tom Kuig, who's the Director of Clubhouse Services, and his number is 774-313-0634, or at tkuig@fhr.net. So that's another great service. I also want to mention that September is National Senior Center Month, and those are the announcements for today. Yes, Sam?
Just in the interest of kind of accuracy, you used the term spraying for Eversource's treatment of vegetation.
Right.
I think that's kind of a sort of hyperbole, because they actually are just injecting into those plants locally. It's not like a plane is spraying.
Right. It's a local spray.
I mean, we all have concerns about polluting our aquifer, so those concerns are, but I think it's important that we not paint Eversource as being sort of cavalier about this. They are trying to make sure that the applications are localized to a particular plant.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. Doug?
Can I put in a plug in for the Wonder Warrior Ride coming up a week from Friday?
Please do.
September 22, 9:30. We meet in North Falmouth. They ride down the bike path and back. It's great to, you know, take a spot anywhere along the bike path if you have a moment. 9:30 kickoff.
Encourage. Megan?
And also, just announcing that this Saturday, it's open to the public, but the Portuguese-American Association has their sort of Hawaiian luau, which I know doesn't sound very Portuguese, but Portuguese people traverse the glow. But it is a pig roast with lots of great food. It's open to the public. You can visit the association's website, and there are tickets that are still available. It's a great event and a great community coming together.
People dress in tropical outfits.
Yes.
It's decorated to the nines.
You get to wear your Hawaiian shirt that you never get to.
What's the date of that?
Saturday.
Oh, this coming Saturday?
Coming Saturday, the 16th, from 6 to 9.
Absolutely. Is there anyone here for public comment? Brian?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Brian Nickerson, Lakeview Avenue. But I'm speaking here on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Friends of Knobscallite and its Executive Director, Catherine Bumpus, to first thank the Board of Selectmen, Julian and his department. I already thanked Peter for what he's done out front of the Knobscallite. But we have an important announcement today. 16 months ago, the town received the key from the Coast Guard, and the town gave the trust of the property to the Friends of Knobscallite. And so it's really an honor to announce that construction started this morning. In fact, I was driving by it at 6:15, and there was already one of the construction guys up there already waiting for it. And if you go by it, I think I sent you Sue a picture, the scaffolding is going up. So in fact, I said, Peter, if you go down there, don't break your neck when you look and wonder what's going on there. So not only that, so it's a great announcement that the work is starting. But also this morning, the Coast Guard, Ace the Navigation, turned off the light. It's only temporarily, and we hope to have, we will have the light back on and the building done, so we'll have celebrations at the Christmas weekend and first weekend of December, Falmouth Christmas by the Sea Weekend. So we have two weeks of cushion there. So I want to thank the Board of Selectmen, especially Sam, the liaison, who did a little bit more than liaison. He got the heating system and the keepers house running, so thank you, Sam, and Julian, and everybody else. And the Community Preservation Fund, that put a lot of money into the work that's going on right now. So thank you very much.
Terrific progress. Thanks for all your work as well. Next on the agenda, we have licenses under summary of actions. The first is to approve an application for a special one-day wine and malt liquor license of the Falmouth Historical Society Museums on the Green, 55 Palmer Ave., on Friday, October 13, 2017.
Over approval. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. Next, under administrative orders, we have the first and authorize a letter from Cape Cod Municipal Management Association to send a letter to state legislators on behalf of the Town of Falmouth regarding an act regulating and ensuring short-term rentals. Mr. Suso, would you tee that up?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. As the board is seeing, I believe you have a copy of that letter in your packet. The Cape Cod Municipal Managers Association has been working in concert representing municipalities on Cape Cod, of course, regarding the seasonal lodging tax. And at a recent meeting, it was determined that this would be suggested to include on behalf of all the municipalities that cared to be, really to be included in this process. And I bring this to the board in that spirit and recommend the board's consideration. And if you so concur, I'll notify the chairman of the Cape Cod Managers that the Town of Falmouth should be included in their number along with this group. And of course, as the board's aware, both you, as well as the town meeting, have voted consistently in support of the seasonal lodging tax moving forward from an equity standpoint, et cetera. So thank you for your consideration.
I would move that we authorize the add the Town of Falmouth to this letter.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a well-written letter.
Next, we have approval of a letter to the Governor and the Secretary of Administration and Finance requesting that the $890,000 earmarked, bless you, for the Shining Sea Bike Way in a 2000, it must be 2014, environmental bond bill be released in the governor's fiscal year 18 capital investment plan. Mr. Suso?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The board may recall that recently, our local legislators, after our requesting of them that they assist us, that the town had completed all of our responsibilities in positioning the town to take the next step to secure the funding that was initially earmarked in the environmental bond bill, as noted by Madam Chair back in 2014. It is now time to petition them officially to request that those funds be acted upon and released. As I noted, our legislators have done so with a companion letter, and this would be a similar, although not identical, letter from the Board of Selectmen asking the A&amp;F Secretary and copying the governor, really petitioning for the release of those funds for a long-awaited and very important project.
I move approval.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have approval of a letter to Transportation Secretary and the Governor regarding improvements to Route 151, 28A intersection. This came about, and Mr. Suso, feel free to add to it, after a follow-up meeting with the state where we wanted to give some history for the participation of our public safety officials, two of which are in the room, also the DPW, Public Works, the roads folks, and it's a history of how Falmouth has worked on this issue for about close, well, over two years, and just really reiterating what has happened in the past. And we wanted to be sure that the secretary had that information. Mr. Suso, anything else?
Well, let's grab it, Madam Chair. Just want to underscore that not only has the board been involved in this over a considerable period of time, but as you noted, professional staff involved in public safety have been involved with an ongoing renew analysis, reconsideration, site visits, in accommodating and working closely with representatives of Mast dot, and have consistently and unanimously recommended the position ultimately staked out by the Board of Selectmen on a signalized intersection for 151 and 28A. And as you've noted, as courtesy, we wanted to remind the Transportation Secretary of that long and significant history of working closely and in good faith with representatives of Massachusetts Department of Transportation and their consultant Tetra Tech. And this draft letter that Madam Chair would sign, if so affirmed by the board, really provides an excellent summary of that history going forward for the Transportation Secretary.
And I just want to note that the draft in the packet is a little bit different than the final draft, which really ends with just appreciation to the secretary for allowing us to recite the history. Sam?
Yes, I just want to mention that the Selectmen have never been unanimous in this. And actually, two incidents have occurred over the last few days. I took my son and his girlfriend on a whale watch out of Plymouth on Saturday. And I don't know whether they've been there recently, but they have a roundabout right at the entrance to Town Wharf. There are at least a dozen restaurants within a half a block of that location. There was a road race going on at the time, and yet traffic was flowing smoothly. Heavy population of people going to restaurants. And whatever, it was beautiful days. There was a lot of people out. There's an example of a roundabout in a very congested area that's working beautifully. And I have to tell you, what was obvious was it was intuitively natural for people to move through that rotary safely. The other thing that happened just was after I left the 9/11 commemoration, I happened to get overtaken, as I was going north on Gifford Street, by an ambulance with the lights flashing and everything. Headed on up, well, I was close enough to the lights there at the Coonamessin Inn, Jones Road, and as they got to that, there was a other fire rescue vehicle that was coming the other way on Jones Road. And so there was a momentary confusion between the two rescue vehicles. But if they were going really fast, obviously, there could have been a serious accident. My point is this, that any rescue vehicle that approaches an intersection has to slow down and make sure that people aren't distracted or what have you. So this business of being able to remotely change a light to give right-of-way to an emergency vehicle, to me, that's something that every, I'm sure every responder knows, that they have to be looking out for the public safety and for the safety. There are many historical incidents of fire and rescue and police having collisions at intersections as they're approaching it, because they have their sirens on, and they can't necessarily hear the other responders. So some of the arguments that are being made for this really bother me, because I think-
Well, we're not here to revote the issue, Sam.
Well, let me just simply say, I cannot agree with this, because I think this is irresponsible. The Department of Transportation and their contractor have shown that this is inherently-
We're not rehashing the issue. You have a vote. You have a vote on whether to send the letter.
But you're asking me to sign off and approve-
I'm not. I'm asking you just-
-a letter that goes to a lot of detail, which I don't necessarily, which I know I definitely don't agree with. The logic is not there, and I think it's actually a little irresponsible, because the Department of Transportation has shown that it is a safer intersection, and I think public safety should be tantamount.
We're not going to be telling firefighters how to drive to rescue. This is simply about whether to authorize the chair to sign the letter. So further discussion? Doug?
I understand Sam's point. However, I do think this letter does just reiterate votes we've already taken. It doesn't really defend the point we made at the time. It's just saying twice the Board of Selectmen did vote the recommendation for signalization, and we're a little concerned that we make this vote and the state responds differently to our vote. I don't think we have any choice but to support the votes we've made in the past.
Megan?
Can we just clarify? I know you're saying that the final draft, we're not using the word unconscionable.
Last two sentences.
Have been removed. Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
No, I edited, and unfortunately, the final draft did not get in the packet.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure. I just thought that sent a different tone.
I agree.
I have a question about the history. Did the state ever come and show us a presentation or give an explanation?
Twice.
Twice. But it wasn't compelling to most?
It was compelling to me. In fact, I changed my position when I saw their analysis of how roundabouts and rotaries get rid of 70% of the collision opportunities for vehicles, 50% of the collision opportunities for passengers, and somewhere around 10% of the collision opportunities for bicyclers. And so it's an inherently safer system. Plus, it's a rural, we'd like to have this New England town, look, do we want urban-looking, you know?
Sam, we're not rehashing the issue.
We are rehashing it.
No, it was a very close vote, and we voted to approve the signalization plan. And that's the vote that we stand by as a board. And we have to, because we, that's what the charter tells us to do, is to stand by the vote of the board as a-
So why are we sending another letter? That's my question.
Is really restating what asked. We're not revoting it. We're not reconsidering the issue. We're just restating our issue, because we did, as a board, vote to request the signalization, and the state is going against what we're requesting. And so it's appropriate thing to say, why do you ask us? If we make a vote and ask you to do something, why don't you listen to us?
Megan?
And that's an appropriate thing to ask.
So just, I understand, in terms of, I just want to clarify. I think Sam, in addition to the argument he's making, which I know we're not rehashing, but doesn't feel comfortable signing his name to this.
I will not sign that.
So, but my understanding is you're simply signing as the chair.
Right. Exactly.
So again, I just want to clarify. This draft has everyone's names. In effect, it would just have the chair's name. Is that correct?
That's correct.
The revised draft was emailed to the board around the noon hour today. I apologize.
Okay. I don't think, no, it's okay. Clearly, I missed that piece, so I just, I'm just clarifying for me, because I clearly didn't get that email about taking out that last piece, and then it would just be the chair signing.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any motion?
I move approval. I mean, I didn't take any of those votes, but if we voted as a board, that's simply what this letter is stating, so.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Next, we have special events. Next, we have special events recurring recommended. First one is Lemon Fest at the BBC Falmouth Heights Ball Field, Sunday, October 8th, 2017.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
This is a reiterating, we've had this...
Yes, it is.
It is.
Aye.
Unanimous? Next, we have the Rosary Rally, 100th Anniversary Fatima Rosary Crusade, Deacon Johnny Simonis at Peg Noonan Park for Saturday, October 14, 2017.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're just a couple minutes before the public hearing.
Sign variance?
Yep.
Good idea. So number six on the agenda, we have a sign variance request by Frederick William House, 594 Palmer Avenue. I will call, thank you. The, I know that this is not recommended for a number of reasons. Mr. Suso, do you want to tee that up?
Madam Chair, I'm going to have to do my paperwork on that, I apologize.
No, that's okay, we're skipping around because of the time.
Yes, Madam Chair, the, you have a note from the Chairman of the Sign Review Committee, Linda Clark, that the committee on August 9th reviewed the application and by unanimous vote determined the approval of the proposed sign was beyond the scope of the Sign Review Committee. They determined that the property is located in the general residential district, the business has been allowed through a special permit, and it's quite clear, I'll just continue reading, that in the permit, that the gift shop and sale of ice cream is only for guests within the Frederick William House, and the individuals using the bike path at the rear of the property and not for the general public, and therefore, a gift shop slash ice cream sign on Palmer Avenue cannot be permitted. Furthermore, the applicant has numerous unpermitted signs at the rear of the property facing the bike path. Based on these facts, the Sign Review Committee cannot make a positive recommendation for a special variance to the Board of Selectmen.
And so I understand that that would be outside the purview of the Board because it would be contrary to the license that is currently in effect, correct?
That's what they've indicated, correct.
Is there any discussion or question?
I just ask about the need for the sign or the reason for the request, although I see that it clearly doesn't look approvable, but just curious.
Ma'am, would you mind coming to the panel?
Hi, I'm so excited to be here tonight, I was actually, I'm not informed about this meeting tonight, and I found out about it just kind of a fluke because I wanted to see where the permit was.
For the record, could you state your name?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's Jeanette Robinson, owner of Frederick William House, and the first, the first discussion that we had on the addition to the existing sign had already been, had already been closed and denied, and that's why we met with the Design Review Committee, which did recommend different alternatives, which we had no problem with whatsoever. So I was really kind of confused about why I was coming before the Board because...
Maybe, maybe the thing to do would be to withdraw the application before the Board and put yourself in a more prepared position and then come back, because it just seems generally that we're really not able to really deal with or certainly not approve the request that you're making based upon the information that we have now, and it kind of sounds like it's a surprise to you as well, so maybe we can...
It was a surprise to me as well, but I, I mean, I met with Suri Budro extensively, and I was very surprised that the Design Committee actually put in writing that it was contrary to the special usage permit, because the special usage permit indicates what is on that property, there's nothing being violated on that property. So I, this was the original request, and this is what the Design Review Committee had suggested.
I'm just thinking, rather than have a denial by this Board, you might want to come in after, you know, being more prepared according to what the requirements are.
With a different application.
Yeah.
With a different application. I don't understand why they didn't do that in the first place, and why I was never notified, even through the mail or a phone call or an email, anything about me being here today, and I'm glad to be here to represent Frederick William House today, so it doesn't look like I didn't show at all, and I just feel...
Appreciate that.
I feel that, I would never have even been standing here if I myself did not call the office this morning, which it's just poor communication, and that should not happen in this process, especially when I took an entire evening to meet with the Design Review Committee, and...
I certainly appreciate what you're saying.
We were in complete agreement, agreeance with everything that they recommended, I said, "Fine, let's do it that way," and it's, it's just, I'm, the system obviously has broken down here.
I'm sorry about your experience, but I think it probably would be better at this point to not have a denial...
Okay.
But to come in with a more approvable application.
Sure, absolutely.
You were not at the August 9th meeting?
I was at the August 9th meeting, yes, and we tried to retrieve all the minutes from that meeting, but for some reason, they don't exist.
According to our documentation, they voted not to recommend it at that meeting.
No, they voted not to recommend what we had asked for originally, and then they came back with what they'd like to see, which is what we agreed with. They drew, had a drawing for me with what they wanted to see, rather than this sign, they recommended this. But this was not what the Zoning Board of Appeals wanted, the Zoning Board of Appeals wanted this. So I was fine with that as well, because something needs to represent that it is luxury lodging, and the guests that do come do not know what exactly Frederick William House is, it's just named, the house is just named, it doesn't even say luxury lodging.
Well, no, part of the issue was off-premises sale of goods that you wanted to advertise, so I think that was part of the denial as well, and Megan?
Yeah, I just, I'm just looking at letters that were sent to you, and I know it's kind of been going on for a little while, so, you know, maybe you don't have them all in front of me, but just some from 2016, and then some from that, just sort of memorializing what took place at that August 9th meeting. And it does seem like there are really two issues, which is what your current, you know, permit allows you to do, and then the sign. So I think, I understand the confusion because you're dealing kind of with two separate bodies, you're talking about a sign, and then you're getting some feedback from them as well as from zoning board, so I think I would agree with the Chair that it might make sense to step it back and to just, you know, complete the circle between both of those, to make sure you're covering all your bases before you come back.
Okay, because when I did meet with the zoning board today, they were surprised that it even came before the Selectmen because it was, should have been handled administratively. That's what I was told today.
Okay, I don't, I like, I'm not sure, I just know that there's like a big gap between November of 2016, when I see the letter came from, sorry, from zoning board, and then August of 2017. So maybe there's some confusion in that, that piece of time, so maybe it just is going to take some connecting the dots to make sure that everyone's on the same page.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, I mean, if we, if you want to step back, I mean, I just wanted to show up today.
We appreciate that.
We read the Chair's point, the best thing for you to do is to withdraw this request now, otherwise, we have to have a vote either to deny it...
Okay, let's withdraw the request, and then we'll go through the appropriate channels.
That's great, and now we know about your business a little bit more. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing, which I will read, I think this is, here's a notice, big stack. Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Section 24077 Wetland Regulations of the zoning bylaws of the Town of Falmouth on Monday, September 11, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on the application of Daniel and Carolyn Palmquist for permission to construct a new 51-foot-by-4-foot dock with a 16-foot-by-3-foot ramp and a 16-by-6 float at the end of the dock, dock to be constructed by barge-supported crane for placement of piles, remaining work to be done by hand. Location of property is 46 Rivers End Road, East Falmouth. Area affected is Great Pond. Interested parties may review the file on this hearing at the Selectmen's office. Per order of the Board of Selectmen, publication dates, Friday, September 1st, 2017, and Friday, September 8, 2017, the Falmouth Enterprise copy to Abutters. Hello.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Jack Landers-Collie, I'm a civil engineer in private practice. My office is located at 634 North Falmouth Highway. I've been retained by the Palmquist to prepare the plan and the applications relative to getting a new dock at their property at 46 Rivers End Road. They are not with me this evening, they, their primary residence is in Chicago, and I'm certain that if there are any questions, I can answer them. To begin with, I want to explain what's going on. Lot 13, also known as 46 Rivers End Road, begins here and going in a clockwise manner, follows Lot 14, then Rivers End Road, to the northwest by Lot 12, to the northeast by Lot 43, back to Great Pond. Existing on the site is a house, driveway, plantings, and a set of stairs which goes to a platform and another set of stairs. These stairs and platform and additional stairs were approved by the Conservation I don't think there was an approval process to the Board of Selectmen, and then again, I'm not certain it was absolutely necessary because they were not in the tidal waters of Great Pond. But I do want you to know that they did get all the local approvals and the certificate of compliance from the Conservation Commission on those matters. To the south of the property is an existing house and an existing licensed dock. To the north, there is a house and also another existing dock. What it is the Palmquist proposed is to build what is shaded in brown, and that is approximately a 50-foot, 50-foot, 51-foot-by-4-foot wide dock, it's going to be fixed piers, it's going to start at this existing platform, be fixed to this point, go to a ramp, and then go to a float, which is going to be held in place by pilings, and we propose one spring pile here. A spring pile, by definition, is to tie either the bow or the stern off so it doesn't bounce against the float. In the course of doing our work, we were required by the Conservation Commission to do an on-the-ground survey, perform bathymetry, have a shellfish study done, and then if we pass certain tests, we could then apply to the Conservation Commission for a dock. We did get full approval from the Conservation Commission as part of that process, and I think appended to your application was a note from the harbor master. The harbor master's note is the same to the Conservation Commission as to yours, and the reason I bring note to that is he recommended that the seaward end of the float be brought back to contour elevation minus three. That discussion took place at the Conservation Commission, and they have a bylaw that requires that we have three feet of draft at all flood stages. We couldn't do that, we couldn't go back to minus three feet and then guarantee them that they'd have three feet of clearance.
What was the reason he wanted it back?
I didn't ask Greg that, he just, he submitted it, I spoke to the staff, that is, the Concom staff, they didn't seem troubled by it. We didn't think it was an issue because when you, if you were to draw a straight line from Mr. Black's dock to the dock to the north, you can see it's almost in the same footprint, that is in the same line, so it doesn't go more seaward or into the channel. We also...
They seem to give more space between the docks if you bring it back a little, I was wondering if that was his reason.
Say it again?
If you bring it closer to shore, you seem to have more space from, away from the other docks, so I was just curious if that was his reason.
Well, I didn't, I didn't find out. As it turns out, we have 66 feet from the edge of this, the northerly end of Mr. Black's dock to this float, and we have 42 and a half feet, more or less, from this float to the closest tie-off pile. So we do have quite a bit of room. As you know, Great Pond has a restricted inlet, I mean, it's got a bridge. So any vessel tied off, whether it be this property, this property, or this properties, can be limited, even to draft size being, just by virtue of, you have to go under the bridge.
Sure.
As part of our presentation, we showed a typical boat, so I think it's a non-issue, I just can't, I like to figure out why he wanted it, but...
What percentage is the dock heading across the pond?
Say it again?
What percentage is that dock heading across the pond? What percentage of the pond width is the dock heading?
Oh, what percentage? Well, it's clearly less than 25%, I, I can't give you the precise amount, but I can calculate it later on and provide it. The channel is, well, here's a mooring and here is a mooring, so the channel is over in this vicinity somewhere, which is more or less the midpoint of Great Pond in this There is a esoteric rule with the Army Corps of Engineers, you can't occupy more than 25% of a channel, so I understand that, and we looked at that, I just don't remember what it is. This meets the performance of the Conservation Commission, I, you know, they hold us to a pretty high standard before we come to you, so I don't think there are any environmental issues, navigation issues per se, certainly shellfish issues. There is a report from the Division of Marine Fisheries that say it is suitable habitat for cohogs, I understand that. I'm not sure whether propagation is in higher or the density isn't higher, I don't know if it's because they're continually fished out, or it's just that there's not enough tidal exchange to allow better propagation of the cohogs.
Any questions from the Board? Doug?
Well, I guess, and I just don't know my coastal property law well enough, as to whether the, what's out in the water is owned by the continuation of the property line or a perpendicular off the property line along the shore. I remember that we did have a case, I think, three years ago where I thought it was continuation of the property line, it's determined who owned space out off in the water, and in this case, that would be a problem, and I'm not sure exactly who to ask, because I don't want to ask the proponents to say that question. And the second is the, there was order condition special from the Conservation Commission of words from, or approval from the southern neighbor, I don't know if you'd heard anything probably about her herself.
I think you should have a submission of a letter submitted by Gene Black, if you don't, we can provide it. The Conservation Commission asked us, just to clarify, in this process going before the Conservation Commission, they repeatedly asked us to notify the Abutters. In addition to the mandatory filing and notification we're required to have, we notified them four times, which is three times more than we had to.
By what means?
Certified mail.
And was it returned all those times by the, the one that they haven't, didn't have a response from? That's, that one, I guess, fluky.
Well, first of all, I'm not sure they were all sent by certified mail, I know at least two of them were, of the four. And the neighbor to the south did give us a letter acknowledging that it wasn't an issue.
Written permission, or not an issue?
He had no problem with it being there, so I, I guess that's passive approval, passive acceptance. The neighbor to the north did not, but let me digress in the conversation a little bit. You're talking about riparian rights when you talk about should they be, follow projection of the property line, or should they go in some other direction? That's a complicated answer. What we were taught is it depends on the shape of the water body, and if you look at this locust map, and as most people know, Great Pond is long and thin, it starts from the south and heads north. The general rule of thumb is that, in this particular geometric shape of the body, that the lines of the property line extend perpendicular to an imaginary center line, and that is the riparian area they get to use. In fact, when we... In fact, when we originally started this project, this lot to the north, the line, the property line actually projects in this area. And we originally thought that this dock was on the wrong lot possibly, but then when we went back and took a closer look at it, mean-high waters in this area, his riparian line actually diverts off in this direction, and it's paralleled, that line's parallel to his dock. We use the same principle here. You come, you follow down the property line. When you get to the shoreline, you then go, in this case, 90 degrees. By way of another example, if you had a body of water that was a perfect circle, all the landowners' lines would start at there, where the water begins, and go to the radial center of that circle. So, and then there's all the other geometric shapes in between. That's kind of an esoteric point. The point is, the Conservation Commission accepted it. We notified the abutters, the immediate abutters, four times. We never got any feedback from them. They never attended a meeting, or at least they never made themselves present at the meetings we were at. And so I just thought, since they hadn't said anything, they hadn't submitted anything, they accepted the application as is.
So you're saying the neighbor to the south has tacitly approved by saying it has no problem?
That's right.
And you had that in writing?
We do.
But you don't have any response from the neighbor to the north in writing?
That's correct. We can't make them answer us. That was the problem. We sent them, like I said, we sent four letters.
I understand. Any other questions from the board? Doug?
I was just looking at Mr. Fraser's comment. He said he would like the dock shortened to the three-foot contour rather than the four-foot contour, which is what he believes where you're at.
Yeah, and I addressed this question earlier. Conservation Commission wants three feet of clearance at low water stage, so we can't accomplish that. So they approved it as we presented it. They had evidence of the letter. The letter was submitted and was in their possession prior to opening the meeting. So they took his information and still move forward.
Okay. So when he says a three-foot contour rather than a four-foot contour, he's talking about the topography of the map, not the depth of the water?
No, he's not talking about back here. He's talking about...
No, I understand that. But he's talking about the topographic lines rather than the depth of the water.
Well, they're one in the same, actually.
The issue for the applicant is that a clearance of three feet could include the depth of the boat or of the dock.
Exactly.
Right.
But the three-foot water line or the negative three doesn't give you enough for a boat to sit there and a dock to be there.
Yeah, if it has six inches of draft and it draws the keel, it's another foot. That's 18 inches. Maybe I didn't explain. The contours shown below mean-high water are on mean-low water data. That means, minus three means on the normal mean-low water cycle, you have three feet of water. Now, we know astronomically, we may have more some low tides or we may have slightly less on some tides.
Right.
That's another reason why we have to make it a little bit longer.
But I guess, Mr. Brown, I agree with you. Greg Fraser knows all this, and I'm surprised that he's suggesting the negative three contour line when he knows the boat and the dock both need some depth in the water. So I'm a little confused as to why he'd be suggesting the three-foot also.
Okay.
Any other questions by members of the board?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience that's here to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that is here to speak against this application? Seeing none.
I move to adjourn the hearing.
Second? All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye. And any further discussion, Sam?
No, I move approval as conditioned by our Conservation Commission.
Second.
I guess I just want to reiterate that one of the conditions that they gave was this written permission, and I want to make sure that's on file from the southern abutter. But Conservation Commission's already put that in there.
So it would be subject to that written permission. All those in favors with that qualification?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Falmouth Police Department quarterly report. Chief Edward Dunn, welcome.
Thank you, ma'am chief. I'm going to move this out of my presentation.
Absolutely.
Turn the lights down a little for you?
Not yet, not yet.
He's on call. Standby.
Standby over there. Again, thank you for having me, so I can share some important information about your police department. Staffing levels.
Do you want me to go inside?
If that works, I can. Staffing levels. Currently, 58 total funded positions that we have. We currently have 52 available offices for work, and that includes me. One position is vacant, and we are currently looking at a lateral. Tom Manager, Suso and I are reviewing the information on the background, and we're moving through that process. The advantage of taking a lateral is he's already a police officer, and the field training portion of it would probably be about a month to get him up to speed as to how we do things here in Falmouth. So we are in the process of looking at that. I have two officers out on a line of duty. I have two officers out on light duty, and I have one officer currently on military leave. I'm happy to say our records department, we had a vacancy where the woman that we had transferred to the DPW. So on August 21st, after a process of reviewing several applicants, we did hire Janet Yurdo, and she's going to be working the 37 and a half hours in record. So that brings us back to two full-time clerks in there. What I had done before when we hired the second clerk was we changed the hours from eight to four to eight to 6:00 P.M. We had to roll it back when we lost our last clerk. So currently, right now, it still is eight to four while we're in training, but I'm hoping sometime in October, once Janet is completely trained, we're going to go back to the 6:00 P.M. closing. And I did that for the folks in the community so that they can come in after work. Most people work till four or five, and they can get reports and things that they need. So we're looking forward to getting back to that again. Summer, we had a very busy summer. As you all know, the town was packed. I do want to mention our summer offices. Our seasonal offices did an outstanding job. The pool this year, when we were searching for seasonal offices, was unbelievable. It really was. And the ones that we hired, Officer Ambrose at Old Silver Beach, Officer Costa at Falmouth Heights Beach, Officer Pike up in Goodwill Park, Officer Soares on Main Street, Officer Shatner on Old Silver Beach, and Officer McGrace at Woods Hole. Fantastic job. I heard, I had a lot of compliments from the business community and citizens of Falmouth that they did a great job. Hope to bring them back again next year because it's hard to find good help. Part of that is I'm also keeping through the month of October, because we're busy. We don't end at Labor Day, keeping Alison Costa on probably till the end of October, and he's going to work four days a week. I'm going to keep him in Woods Hole two days a week, and he's going to cover Main Street two days a week. And Main Street's going to be covered by Samantha Soares, who was up on Main Street all summer, did a fantastic job, had a lot of compliments about her. She's going to be here till October, and she's going to be working Sunday, Monday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday on Main Street so that we have coverage there. So basically, Main Street's going to have full coverage right up until October.
Great.
Ongoings at the Detective Division, very busy. We had 27 undercover buys. We've had six warrant arrests, 13 search warrants. We've got seven indictments pending in the Barnstable Superior Court, and we've purchased three handguns from the street. Some of the charges have been possession of a Class A, B, and D substance, which are marijuana, cocaine, and heroin. And while we're on the heroin subject, this community, as well as other communities, are still having an issue with overdoses. So far, we have had 118 overdoses this year. Thirteen of those resulted in deaths. Seventeen of the overdoses were saved by officers by using Narcan. Forty-six opiate-related arrests have been made in the same time through investigations, and we continue to partner with Gosnell Treatment Center, and that is a fabulous program. We've done 84 home visits, and what that is, is we go to homes with a counselor from Gosnell and Officer, Sergeant Michael Seminole, and we actually go out and visit these people who have overdosed the day before or the week before and speak with them about services that are available to them, speak to their families about services. So we've done 84 home visits. Twenty-three of those victims have been assisted into treatment. Seven of them took other forms of treatment themselves, and 70 victims have been sectioned 35 by families. That's a court order to get treatment. We also have sectioned 35 individuals whose families have basically cut ties with them and don't know really what's going on, so we started that program also too. And again, Sergeant Seminole along with the Gosnell Recovery Coach are doing a great job. They really are, even though the numbers on the other side are high. And I do want to state so that the general public has an idea, and I've had a conversation with Ray Tomasi on this too. The reason our numbers are high, and we're probably highest on the Cape, is because we have the services here. So people come here, they get treatment, they don't get fixed the first time, and they relapse. So that's why our numbers are high. We have the same probably problem situations that other communities have, but when I read those numbers out here, it can be scary. We're still dealing with the mental health issues too that plague our community. This year, in 2017, the department has had 139 calls for service involving mental health. We started a similar program with Falmouth Human Services, and Officer Nabon goes out with Mark Abbott, and they've done 53 home visits so far this year in 2017, because the majority of the calls to these homes are repeat. When I say we've done 139 calls, it's probably half, you've divided it in half, you've probably been to those homes several times. So that's why we started this program, again, to let them know that there are services for them. And after speaking with Mark, he made us aware that since the start of the program, 36 individuals have received treatment through other facilities and are doing well. So the program is a success also. Calls for services. Self-initiated calls, I told you before, those are the ones that the officers on the street will make a motor vehicle stop or see something suspicious and initiate it themselves. There's been 8,734 calls for self-initiated. Dispatch calls, 10,324. Total calls for service, 19,058. Believe it or not, that number is down by 8 percent. However, the summer alone, just for the summer of 17 here, we've answered 8,759 calls with 5,098 man-hours. 2016, we had 9,093 calls with 5,087 man-hours. So less calls, more, just about the same amount of man-hours, because those particular calls took longer for the service, for whatever the investigations were. So calls were down, but the hours were up, so. Domestic violence, we have the Domestic Violence Advocate program. We've had 225 domestic violence calls. We've had 23 restraining order violations. We've had 206 restraining orders served. A domestic violence advocate was out of work for medical reasons for a period of time, but she is back to work, and she's doing a great job, and she really is an important part of the police department, so I'm very happy about that. For the second part of my presentation here, I'm going to refer to the PowerPoint here. This year was, again, a sad year. All right. You know how to use this? I don't know, just press them, but I don't want to shut off. All right, here we go. That's the one?
That's the one.
Thank you. The police department's family lost two of our officers this year that had retired. This one here is Chief Paulino Rodriguez. Chief, he passed away at age 89 on June 19th, 2017. Chief Rodriguez started working at the Falmouth Police Department in 1954. Over multiple decades, he climbed through the ranks from patrol officer to sergeant to captain to command officer, and finally chief. He led the department from 1984 until he retired in 1993. Chief Rodriguez was kind, generous, dedicated police officer with an infectious smile. Chief Rodriguez will be missed. And I had the pleasure to serve, you know, work for him when he was a sergeant and through those ranks and as the police chief, and he was a very good man. The second individual we lost is Thomas DiCosta, retired patrol officer. He died at age 77. He passed away on May 13th, 2017. He worked with the Falmouth Police Department from 1964 through 1986. His son, Douglas DiCosta, is currently lieutenant with the Falmouth Police Department, and Tom will be so remiss also. Upcoming events. This is something I'm very proud of, and I wanted to talk about it. It's called the Pink Patch Project. Falmouth Police Department is proud to announce our official partnership with the Pink Patch Project, which started as a small campaign in Seal Beach, California, to raise awareness has grown into a national movement involving 135 police departments nationwide. It's actually, I did count this morning, I went on the website, it's up to 170. We were the 135th police department to sign on. Participating departments will wear and sell pink patches to bring attention to the fight against breast cancer and support breast cancer research organizations in combating this disease. The Pink Patch Project raises awareness about breast cancer and the importance of early detection, raises funds for cancer research, treatment, education through the sales of the commemorative pink patch and other items. And for more information on that, you really can, you can visit the Pink Patch Project website, and it is amazing. Here in Falmouth, during the month of October, is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I am going to allow, and I am also going to wear, our uniforms. We're going to change out our patches to wear the pink patch for the month as a reminder of our commitment to raise awareness about this devastating disease. The commemorative patch of the Falmouth Police Department, we are going to sell them. It'll be $10 for the patch and $20 for the hat. They can be purchased year-round at the Falmouth Police Department, because this is not going to be a one-time event. They can be purchased year-round. And all the proceeds, I did, I reached out, a lot of these departments, if you go to the website, you'll see they donate to major organizations. I reached out to the Cape Cod Healthcare, because we have a cancer center right here in Falmouth, and all proceeds will benefit the Cape Cod Healthcare Cancer Center service in Falmouth, at the Clark Cancer Center, and the Seifer Women's Health Imaging Center. So the plan is through the month of October to sell the patches, sell the hats, and whatever money is raised through that month, we will donate it to the cancer center this year, and then just continue selling it through next year, and that will give us a head start for next year. Not only are the officers going to wear the pink patch, you notice our Cruises have a patch on the side of the cars?
Yes.
They're going to be donating pink patches too, again, to bring awareness about this disease.
And keep the money local, which is great. And isn't Falmouth the only department on the Cape that's...
Yes. Right now, Falmouth is the only department. There are many departments here in Massachusetts that participate in, and if you go to the website, you'll see them all and see the different patches. If you so want to collect them, you can reach out to these different departments. Again, they're for sale, and they do the same thing for whatever organization they decide to donate it to. But yes, Falmouth is the only town on Cape Cod right now participating.
Appreciate your leadership in that.
Sad to say, our 17th Citizen Academy, we had to postpone it. Enrollment was low. I don't know if people are just busy, so we postponed it. So, we postponed it and we'll hold it in the spring and we'll get that out there real quick, you know, when we're going to pick a new date and see if we can't get some enrollment up, so.
It's usually a hot ticket.
It usually is. We usually have a very, we usually turn people away. Again, I don't know, people are busy, so it's okay. But we're going to continue, instead of the Citizen one, we are going to continue, we have the partnership with the Morse Pond School, the after-school program, and that will start in December and we'll do two classes over there with the kids. So, we do the junior one there. So, we're not giving up, but just postponing. Past events. Been very busy. This is another event that I participated in, is the Special Olympics Cruiser Convoy. Falmouth Police Department joined the Special Olympics Cruiser Convoy with over two hundred other Massachusetts law enforcement agencies to honor the athletes at the Special Olympics. The concept of the Cruiser Convoy started here in Massachusetts and takes place every June in conjunction with the Summer Games. Police vehicles start at three points across the state representing the north, south, and the west. We all met, all the Cape cruisers that did go up, and there were about twelve, I believe, we met at Friendly's at the Bridge. Three caravans then convoyed to Boston College Law in Newton before continuing on to the Harvard Athletic Facility in Alston. And one final line of cars with lights and sirens blaring, trust me. We pull into the games and all the Olympians are there and it is awesome event. Then, once we're there, we get broken up into different groups because there are different events going on. And I went to the aquatic section and was able to give the Olympians their medals. And it was, again, very nice event and we will continue doing that in the coming years. High-Five Fridays, big success here in Falmouth. It started with, I think we got up to like fifty-something towns in the Commonwealth doing it on one Friday, but we decided to take it to the next level. And we did it every Friday at one school. We did it all, we did it all the elementary schools on that one day. And then, because we have four, a lot of towns only have one elementary school, but we have four, so we went around to the different schools every other, every Friday, so I got to see the kids. We did do it this past Friday to welcome them all back. So, and we did all the schools. But again, the goal for that is to get the kids to see the police officers for, in a different light. Because most of the times when we respond to a house, it's either because of a burglary or domestic or a car accident, so, and it's been really successful. The teachers like it and the students like it and we're going to continue that.
Terrific.
July fourth went very well. It was a beautiful night. All the police department worked that day, including myself. And I would like to thank all the agencies involved that supported us from the Sheriff's Department, DPW, those of you that were up in the heights saw that we had the DPW trucks up there this year. We have to take things to a different level because of what's going on in the world. But again, without our partners, we couldn't have made it successful and it was a great night. A national night out, huge success. We didn't have the Commodores Day meeting that night, so everybody came to see us. Again, another way for the community to get to know their police department. We had tours, dunk tanks, I didn't go on the dunk tank this year. K-9 demonstrations, the sheriff participated by bringing his boat and command center, the fire department was there, DPW brought their trucks and front-end loaders so the kids could climb on them. Again, collaborative effort just to bring, you know, a nice group, community feel. Shop of the Cop, Back to School. On Wednesday, August sixteenth, Detective Andrew Lowen and Officer Viola Ferrer participated in the Shop of the Cop. The Falmouth Police Department participated with, I believe, all the towns on the Cape participated with this. We do the Shop of the Cop, Back to School, and we also do one at Christmas time. Again, very successful. These two young men were very pleased to get a lot of goodies. And all the money to buy them, their, you know, back-to-school clothes and backpacks are donated by the Patrolman, Sergeant, and Lieutenant Union, along with myself. Coffee with a Cuff, another successful event that we've been having where it is, we had one at Jack in the Beanstalk in August. I believe we have one coming up on September twenty-eighth at Coffee Obsession in Woods Hole. Again, another event that allows the community to get to know their police officers and you don't have to come and talk about police, you can talk about the football game and baseball game or whatever you want, but just to get to know your officers in a different light. And I've been a very successful program, I'm very proud of it. And I'm proud of it because of the men and women that, from the police department that participated in it. Because without them, it would not be a success.
Above and beyond.
That's my report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Megan?
Just, I was going to say that, you know, I'm a defense attorney, so usually I don't say this about police officers, but
I realize that.
You know this.
I do know.
But really, this, you know, in all seriousness, it's the, really, the definition of community policing. And I think that this community is really leading the way. We keep hearing in the news all the time about the need for community policing and this is what it looks like. And, you know, certainly it's because of your leadership, but again, because you have officers who are willing to do. It's not the same faces for every event, you know? Folks are really, it's across the board participating. And I think, I hope people really recognize how sort of unique and special that is. And my guess, going back to your statistics, is that perhaps part of the reason why some of the calls took longer is because those connections are being made where it's not just someone showing up to do an investigation and leaving, but because of the work that you're doing around mental health and substance abuse, those connections are being made with some of those folks who are frequent users of the police services, who are calling for various reasons. And so, I think it's, you're just doing so much on so many different levels, so I hope people recognize the, just the uniqueness of that and the impact that it has in a community, particularly of this size where connections really do make an impact. So, thank you.
Absolutely. And the cooperation that that instills, I think we'll see really more and more into the future based upon your good leadership at this point, Chief. Any other comments? Doug?
Just one that came up today and I guess I'll follow through with this discussion. With the high-fives you're doing, I think you are getting a great rapport with the younger kids. And there was a question as to whether we could take advantage of that to really reward the kids who wear their helmets when they're biking, you know, whether it's a ice cream cone coupon they can get as opposed to criticizing the ones who don't, the parents who don't, but really say, we've got to get these, all of these kids wearing their helmets and to make it.
We actually did that over the summer because I had extra bike patrols on the bike path. And believe it or not, Seven-Eleven has a national campaign and they sent us a bunch of coupons for celebrities or whatever. And all the bikes, all our mountain bikes have those coupons in them. And when they see the kids doing the right things and all that, even the ones that don't, it's kind of like, you know, do the right thing next time, we give them the coupons and they can go to Seven-Eleven and get slushy or slurpee or whatever they're called.
That's great.
I don't drink.
You're already doing that.
So, what are we doing? One thing I did, one thing I did forget and Doug Brown didn't mention, we have the Wounded Warrior Ride coming up on Friday, the twenty-ninth. I'll be riding with them. A lot of our offices do ride with them and some of our other offices will be at the intersections stopping motor vehicle traffics so that the wounded warriors don't have to dismount and cross all that. Great event. And I would just like to also mention, they are inspiring people. I mean, they are, and they inspired me, if I can just share one piece of information with you. Several years ago, I did the ride with them and because of that ride, I probably hadn't been on a bicycle in a long time. Just hadn't. So, because of them, and I spoke with them at one of their, at one of their events, they asked me to speak about it, I was so inspired, I got into cycling. And it was because of that day there. Last year, I did my First Century Ride from Springfield to Boston for the Right to Remember. The Right to Remember is to remember fallen officers and your three hundred dollar registration fee goes to the fallen officer's memorial. Last year, it went to Trooper Clarity's family and Officer Tarantino's family. Those are two officers killed in Massachusetts in the line of duty. If you're in Boston this Saturday, between five and six, I am doing the Right to Remember again, Saturday the sixteenth, from Springfield to Boston. It's a hundred and six mile ride. They're hoping to have over five hundred riders this year. Last year, there was two hundred and fifty-plus riders. It is awesome. We end up at the State House, so if you're in Boston, stop by the State House and watch that ceremony. The governor did meet us and gave a little speech up there too on that, so.
I've got to applaud that. I really have to. Spectacular.
And if anybody needs any hats or patches, the patches aren't in yet. I'm hoping, I was told they were going to be here this week. You can get them at the police department. Again, ten dollars for the patch and twenty dollars for the hats.
Great cause, Doug. Did you want to?
I was just going to say, I appreciate all the outreach and I think it's really working. And I really appreciate the fact that you've gone following up on these overdoses and taken the initiative and showing them that there's things that they can do, because I think that's really important. Thank you.
And those suffering from mental health issues as well, that's extremely important.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, we have the presentation of the fiscal year eighteen capital budget to the Board of Selectmen. Ms. Petit?
Lights or no lights?
You can leave it like this. I think this may be pretty good. Good evening, how is everybody tonight?
Good.
Um, Peter, would you mind getting the, would you mind?
I'll be happy.
It's freezing.
Yep.
Doug?
Yeah?
Can you do something with the cold, like warm it up a little in here? Do you mind? Do you know how to do that?
Turn it off. You can.
Don't you need a key?
No, just open it.
It's closed off.
I'm so glad I didn't have to ask this time. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. We did submit, first of all, I did see a couple Finance Committee members walk in. Peter Hargreaves is here and Nick Lowell and what was the other somebody else? Welcome. And also, I wanted to introduce Ann Bastille. She's new to our office. Ann, do you want to stand up for a second? And she has taken Stacy Stokes, she's Stacy's replacement, and she helped me put a lot of this together and she's doing a fabulous job and I just wanted everybody to put a name with the face, so thank you.
Thanks for that.
Okay. So, you do have what would be going into the Town Meeting Ward, I think we're familiar with it. We do this, you know, every year. And you have all the backup in detail, it was in your packet on Friday.
Yep.
I have prepared just an overview of the capital plan, just to go over it and then answer any questions you may have. So, the capital plan is presented at the annual November Town Meeting. You know, we do the annual, it seems, you know, Falmouth, we have the two annual Town Meetings every year, so we do the capital in November and then we do the operating budget in April. And as you know, we use one-time revenues to fund one-time expenses.
How many times have you said that?
All the time. And so, we have a use of free cash and we have some other available funds. This is the first year that we'll be requesting an appropriation from the Capital Stabilization Fund, so we have that in there as well. Requests submitted by department heads and then reviewed by the Finance Director, the Assistant Town Manager, and Town Manager. And I just wanted to thank Peter Johnson Staub this year. He came along with me as I went to all the different departments and looked at the equipment and all that and talked to department heads and it was great having him along and his knowledge and what he has done in Yarmouth. And so, it was a really good partnership. And then, the Town Manager makes recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. But, you know, in the end, the Finance Committee reviews these requests and they make the recommendations to Town Meeting. Detail sheets are available for the FY eighteen proposed funding. Like I said, there's a first-time use of the Capital Stabilization Fund. And also, another thing that we did this year is we went through a lot of the older articles and the excess that we, you know, appropriations that haven't been spent, and we appropriated those. And you'd see that on the front sheet of the spreadsheet that was put in your packet. You'll have a, there's a request of using five point seven million use of free cash this year. The total capital plan is seven point six million. And this year, we've allocated a million to the School Department as well. And so, here are some of the major initiatives in this plan. As you know, as we've gone through the years, the Highway Department usually requests about eight hundred thousand dollars for paving. And, you know, in the beginning, as we were get going on the, on the capital plan and it was, it was, you know, somewhat tight, we would recommend four hundred thousand. And then, you know, we upped it a little bit. And last year was the first year that we actually recommended the eight hundred thousand and it passed, but there were some caveats to that. We wanted them to pave some of the school parking lots with that eight hundred thousand and they did. And they've really been doing a great job on the paving. They've really kept up with it. So, this will be the first year that we actually recommend the full eight hundred thousand for the, for the Highway Department. There's also an initiative in there for the police parking lot. We've been talking about this for a few years. And it's, you know, to look at the entrance of, in and out of the police department and moving the memorial and actually creating some additional spaces in the back of the police department. There's also a half-million dollar allocation for Chapel Court Road. As you know, that there's been issues up there that the town definitely has to address. We're looking at, in the beginning, about a million and a half, but we feel right now we might phase that in, so it's about five hundred thousand. Also, this is the first year, well, I know there's been a lot of talk and there's a report that has been distributed on the field maintenance and there's a lot of issues with the field. We understand that. It's not an easy fix, it's not a cheap fix. So, we've been meeting with DPW, Peter and I, and we were looking at, you know, what can we actually put towards the fields and really make a difference and, you know, allocate money every year? And so, we do have a two hundred thousand dollar allocation into the capital plan and what that will do is it will take three fields and it will refurbish those three fields. And we're also working with the Recreation Department because a lot of that is overused, so we really need to schedule it appropriately and then be able to refurbish the field. So, we've really had some good conversations and we do have a plan in place in order to accomplish that. And you'll see more allocated, you know, in the future, but I think it would be a good start right now.
Just raise a question on the Gale Report. I mean, they analyzed our fields, but they pretty much had said that we almost need nine new fields, which of course is not reasonable. But they said you could at least add artificial turf fields, which can be used far more often without, you know, wrecking the turf. Are we looking at that? Because I didn't see anything in your capital planning in that regard.
Yeah, it's a, that's a good question, Sam. We did discuss it. I think we feel right now, and I really haven't got to this yet, but in the capital plan in the School Department, they have an update of their design for the, for moving the high school football field up to, you know, the football field up to the high school with an artificial turf. And I, you know, it's not inexpensive, if you will. So, I think, you know, looking at that, we wanted to get through that project first. You'll probably, you know, if it passes, you'll see something in the April Town Meeting and then a debt exclusion in May. So, we are addressing artificial and I think they want three, but that includes the three. But we want to do something right now and, you know, it's, you know, we're trying to fit it in and, you know, there's only so many funds, so much funds to go around, so.
Megan?
I was just going to say, I also like this approach. I mean, we have two separate issues. We don't have really enough fields, but also the fields that we have at present really do need to be refurbished. So, I like the fact that we're not waiting for kind of the Holy Grail of a potential turf field before we're fixing what we have in front of us that are still going to be used on a regular basis. So, I think it's helpful to, you know, as you're articulating, kind of approach it in a multi-step way.
Okay, thank you. And also, I do want to mention, especially since we're embarking on the high school field, is that the artificial turf, you say it's, could say maybe it's about a million dollars, right? Round it up a little bit. That has to be replaced every ten years. So, if you're going to build an artificial turf field, you want to make sure you're putting money away so when the ten years comes up that you can replace it. Because you don't want to run into the same issue with the artificial turf that you're running into with, you know, natural turf. So, we've taken all that into consideration, but thank you. We have the vulnerability assessment in there for eighty thousand, it was in the request of the Board of Selectmen. We also have two major capital purchases, a fire engine and the ambulance. We have gone out to the Fire Department and, you know, last, it was two years ago in the capital plan, we did replace the fire engine. It was desperately needed and as you know, some of these vehicles, they're older and we're going to, so we're going to do two right in a row. And those are the two vehicles that you will see that we're requesting use of the Capital Stabilization Program. Last year, we, you all voted new fiscal policies and so, we do have some criteria of putting money into the Capital Stabilization and taking it out. So, I think this is, really fits perfectly. It's over a million dollars and it's time to really hit this, you know, this year. And also, we have the Simpsons Bulkhead that we'll be fixing up, if you will, but we'll be using Waterways Improvement Funds for that. And I just want to mention with the Waterways Improvement Funds, we've really made a dent. We had the Wild Harbor Bulkhead, the Robbins Road, and now Simpsons. And, you know, Mr. Susu and I, we're at a Waterways Committee maybe three or four years ago when none of this had been done. So, I'm pretty excited that we've been able to make a dent in. a dent in that. We also have a final phase of radio replacement for public safety, and this really kind of keys into the consolidated communication, upgrades our radios for digital radios, so this will be for the rest of the Fire Department, MES, and DPW. We have some, you know, larger vehicle replacements in DPW, we've made a really, really good progress over the last, you know, few years. The DPW Department, I mean, you take, you go over there and you just look at the vehicles and the operation over there in a community this size, so we're happy to be able to request a couple replacements there. And also, the library window replacement, I just want to mention, as you know, last year when we came to town meeting, we had an issue over at the T-Ticket School with the asbestos. And so, the way we funded that is we had leftover money from the library that was borrowed that needed to be spent, it couldn't stay on the books any longer, we're paying principal and interest on that. So, we reallocated that to that project. And so, we didn't want the library to feel like they lost that money, so, you know, we wanted to recommend the library window replacement, and they have a small, a few smaller capital projects as well.
Which library is that?
The Main Street Library. And so, the Finance Committee will start meeting on the 19th. The warrant will go to the printer no later than Thursday, October 13th, to meet with the guidelines to get it to town meeting members two weeks before town meeting. And as you know, town meeting seems like a little bit earlier this year than normal, so the timeframe's a little bit constrained, and town meeting will be November 6th.
That's why what, your presentation is very important, so town meeting members can start getting acclimated to some of the issues and, you know, as we go around and prepare their questions, and so the constituents can call town meeting members and ask those questions. Megan?
I was just going to say, just as a general, this is kind of a broader, broader just suggestion. I know at our last town meeting, there was, we got a lot of feedback about sort of what goes into the warrant, and just folks looking for that kind of fuller explanation of some of these issues. So, I know our warrant booklets can't be 150 pages, but just, you know, as we're kind of engaging in this last piece of this, you know, getting everything together, that we're just, you know, aware of making sure folks have access, you know, that it may not be everything in that booklet, but just, again, I think there were some folks who came forward feeling like they didn't have a sense of what some of the articles dealt with and that some key information maybe was missing. So, just to bring that, you know, as we sort of embark on this piece, to bring that into our memory, that there was some concern about that from a number of folks. So, just thinking about how we include it or make it available on the website, that we direct people to, you know, our town meeting members to that in advance, so they have that, and I think the website helps.
Yeah, that would save paper, too.
Yeah, we'll post this on the website tomorrow. Also, I will be at all the precinct meetings before town meeting to answer any questions. Also, the Finance Committee will be holding a public hearing, which is required in the charter, we'll do that probably in a couple weeks, so that will be advertised in the newspaper and they can come, and I'll give a brief presentation and, you know, answer any questions, but we will make sure, you know, that this is available and, you know, try, because I think we have some really good information on the backup, and if they read through it, they'll get the information, we just want to make sure that it's available to them and that it's easily accessible.
Exactly. That's, I mean, certainly the information's out there, but just making it accessible.
Yeah. Good point. Thank you.
Yes. Jennifer, I know the town did not succeed in its application with the CPC to actually do the measurement of the Herring Pond estuary.
Okay.
Which was to baseline the nitrogen loading that's there, because of course, with the sewer system being expanded and the wastewater facility putting a lot more affluent into the ground, we need a baseline to make sure that we're living within the DEP regulations. I didn't see that in this capital plan, and that is a sort of a one-time expense that I would have expected to be in the capital budget.
Well, I, just the way the process works is that the department heads put in requests, we react to those requests, we have the 10-year plan and we look at them. I really, I don't have any information, Sam, on that. I, we, you know, we requested what was put in front of us, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, my only, my only thinking is that, you know, it was argued that this was a time urgent, sort of baseline measurement and documentation for the Herring Pond now as it exists, and if we need a baseline, you know, we need to start now.
I really don't know anything about it, I'm sorry.
No, it was just something that I looked for and didn't see in there, and I feel like we need to fund it somehow.
Okay.
But I think what you're saying is you're really looking to department heads to bring to you what their proposed requests are, so it sounds like perhaps that didn't cross your desk in this process.
It didn't, and we have a 10-year plan, and what I do tell everybody, and, you know, when we have department head meetings, I do mention, is that you want to put it on the 10-year plan, you know, you don't want to just, you know, I try to coach in order to avoid that all of a sudden it just shows up this year and we've never seen it before, because, you know, it really is about financial planning and fiscal responsibility. So, it's hard for me to even talk about something I don't know about. Was, it could have been, we've got it and then there was a mistake, I don't know anything about it, I've met with various department heads, but that's really how we do develop the capital plan, is through the department heads, and that's something that, you know, a lot of times the board will mention to the Town Manager or in a public session or an email, we'd like to see this.
No, it could have been the board's initiative, certainly, but we are past the deadline.
Yeah, I, I know.
Any other questions? Doug?
One comment and two questions. Actually, I was quite impressed how often we were able to meet the requests that were put forward by department heads, and I think with, except for one large ticket item, it was really amazing that you were able to do such a good job in proposing that we fund so many things that the department heads are coming forward. And I think a lot of that has to do with the past years of informing them and educating them, saying, yep, you may make it part of the 10-year plan, and we can then find space for it, as opposed to just ask for everything this year, because then it looks like we're not even coming close to funding it, so I really appreciate that. The two questions I had, one is about how much money do we put away every year into this general stabilization fund?
About a million. Oh, in the general, it's 400?
I'm sorry, capital stabilization.
Capital is a million, million thirty-two.
Planning on putting in about the same that we're taking out.
Yes.
And what's our current balance in that fund?
It is, I have it in the fiscal.
I guess we're going to.
I want to say about five, no, I don't know.
That's about five or six million.
When I gave you the balances, you know, I did give it to, because as you know, we, when we vote it in April, it's from, part of the annual budget process, and then we put it in in the next fiscal year. Let me just check the balance, it should be in the.
While you're checking that, I just want to know whether the members attending from the Finance Committee have any particular question or anything you want to raise to the board?
Not yet.
Peter, if you want to come up after Jennifer? Nick, you can just wait.
So, Peter Hargraves, I want to take the opportunity to piggyback on what Megan said about providing clarity to people at the meeting. And it isn't fair to Jennifer, we haven't had a chance to discuss this, we just got the spreadsheet today, but, for instance, one example that causes a lot of consternation, I think, in town meeting is, there's an article to provide funds for maintaining the fields. Then CPC is considering some money to maintain the fields, and we have a budget here for maintaining the fields. I think if people could understand the relationship of all those things, it would, and any other place where we have this kind of overlapping synergistic, or maybe it's just duplicate reporting on money that's funded one way and spent.
Or a footnote.
So, I guess you've got it from what you said.
Sure. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Jennifer?
Yeah, I just want, I just want to comment, you know, we do, sometimes it's difficult with petition articles. You have a group, this is what they want to see, we're working on it, so unless I know about it, we can't reach out and try to fix it.
Sure.
And so, it really is having those different factions of groups working independently, and then we're working, you know, trying to address the issues that we know are paramount. We know that, you know, the field issue, we know that we have a field issue and we were addressing it, and so I didn't see the, you know, the petition article until it came in. But, you know, we want to, I know Peter's going to be going to the Recreation Committee in a couple nights, they asked him to come in, and he'll be talking about that. So, we do try, you know, to bring it together. Falmouth is a very involved community, which is great, so we do try to reach out, and I do try to reach out when I can if I know about something.
This is a good message to petitioners, that you are ready, willing, and able to help them out and to.
Absolutely.
Coordinate their efforts, so that's an important message.
Absolutely.
Much appreciated. Megan?
And I think just to, so, you know, the broader point is, a petitioner can bring whatever they want, just regardless of what you're doing, that's the beauty of it, they get to do that. Other committees, other groups of people can kind of put things forward. I think maybe what Peter is speaking to, or at least what I was speaking to, is just as we put together the explanations, that we maybe, you know, explain that this is sort of separate, this particular, you know, the funding is separate and distinct from any, you know, separate petitioner's articles or CPC or anything like that, just so that people have a sense of that, how things are interconnected or not.
And just, you know, just as a point of reference, when we do put the warrant booklet together, I do work close with the Finance Committee, but the explanations are the Finance Committee's explanations. But I will, you know, let them know about this discussion tonight for the rest of the committee and make sure, you know, and really take these comments and, you know, put them into action and mention them to the Finance Committee.
Appreciate that. Doug?
So, for all the people who stand up at town meeting and say, I don't have enough information, where is it? Where is it? It's on the website now?
This will, well, the Finance Committee got this today, I mean, really, point of our process is, is we want to give the information to the board first, right? We want, you know, to present this to you. So, once we have certain recommendations to the Board of Selectmen, that's when I start giving out the information, so that's why I sent it to the committee today, it's public record, you all be talking about it tonight, we'll put it on the website. We do mail out the warrant booklets two weeks in advance, and then we, you know, and I do attend all the precinct meetings and I do get questions, I actually get phone calls, I have people come in and I meet with them and give them the information. But this is all in the warrant booklet, and they, you know, need to look for it, we need to make it more accessible, and we're there, and I say that tonight, you know, my phone number's on the website, I answer my own phone, I've met with town meeting members and, you know, walked them through why we've done certain things and tried to answer that.
But when we say that, you know, the budget is this thick, and do you really want that in your warrant book, of course they don't.
Right.
But where would that reference be? Is it eventually on the website before?
Oh, yeah, yes.
How much before town meeting would you say that there's time for people to do research?
Okay, so, this will be on the website tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay? We've made the recommendation. With the operating budget, that's a little different, that's like this thick, and that does go on the website, and we actually put a hard copy in the library of that.
Mm-hmm.
So, that goes on the website as soon as, you know, we have the recommendations. And I do want to mention that the budget is going to take on a very different look this year, because we are, as you know, we got a grant through the Community Compact Grant to restructure that to GFOA guidelines, and so we've been working hard at doing that, so you will, you will see that. And that does get scanned in and that is on the website as well.
Well, certainly, the board appreciates you as Finance Director with the Town Manager in the continuing effort, including the CAFER, which you recently got an award for as well, to make things more user-friendly, available, transparent, and understandable, so that's appreciated, but, you know, you never can do enough, so, you know, it's, you know, we continue to respond to requests and continue to make it the best it can be.
Absolutely.
Any more questions? Anything else, Jennifer?
Not on the capital plan.
Next.
Good. Okay, so we're ready for fiscal policy?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, I have two fiscal policies in front of me, we can start with the, let's start with the overall fiscal policy, if that's okay? Now, the board voted this last year, the original fiscal policy was voted in 2006, so we updated this last year. We looked at certain guidelines, and when we look at the auditors, the financial statements, you know, some terms have changed, some recommendations have changed, we have now like an unassigned fund balance instead of looking at all the different funds, and we want to keep ranges, try to keep our reserves in certain ranges, gives us some flexibility. So, the board adopted this policy last year. And we had a call with the Bond Rating Agency last, I think it was like last October or last November, and they had a couple comments on our fiscal policy, we've made really good strides, and so they had a couple comments to make some changes, and those are the changes, I actually put a red line in your packet.
Saw that.
And those were, two of the changes is on page, page three, I was taking out the strive to, they really wanted a hard and fast, we'll maintain a range of that. Now, you want to say, okay, well, this is a policy, so what happens if, you know, you have this huge economic downturn and you just absolutely can't maintain that range? Well, nothing's really going to happen. You know, I mean, we're going to, we're always going, well, we're going to try to be conservative and try to move forward, but they just wanted to see stronger wording, and so that was my recommendation to remove the strive to. Also, on page four, it referenced the Capital Improvement Task Force from a few years ago, it was when I first started, and that was just really a recommendation, it was a task force, I know Doug Jones was involved in that. So, we've kind of, it wasn't really a policy, and I noticed that, so it wasn't, it wasn't anything in writing, so I took that out, because the capital plan really is on the recommendation of the Town Manager, and the Town Manager will recommend funding sources, and it does have the guideline in here, which we did talk about the capital, with the Capital Improvement Task Forces, you know, anything from 25,000 to a million would be available funds, if it was over a million, we'd want, you know, maybe capital stabilization or some borrowing or things of that nature. So, that was just kind of freshening up the wording in the, in the overall fiscal policy.
Any comments or questions on the edits from the board?
And there are two, getting rid of strive to and shall maintain. We've, since we've had that policy of striving to, we have been able to do it fairly well easily.
We're well within the range.
And it's still the range of five, 15%.
Yes.
I don't, I can't imagine how we wouldn't even come close to that, hit that 5%.
Yeah, exactly.
Really, we're striving to do 15, one might be stuck with the five.
Right, yeah, that's correct.
No reason we can't maintain those.
Yeah, the board, you know, with the fiscal policies, really has, you know, set it up correctly and.
Based upon good advice.
Yeah, thank you.
Because you told us to do it.
And so, with that, I just wanted to mention, before I get to the operating budget policy, I did have two spreadsheets in your packet.
Yep.
One was from Betholomew, and I just wanted to explain this. One of the things that we want to do is we want to report to the board on our fiscal standing during the year, right? Because you get the audit reports, and, you know, I come up, you know, once or twice a year and we look at the budget policy, but we really aren't reporting to you all about, you know, about our revenues coming in and things of that nature. So, I'm going to start with the trust funds. So, we can invest our trust funds in a longer-term vehicle, if you will, and so we have our trust funds with Betholomew, it's an investment firm that a lot of communities use, we've had them for a number of years, I had them in another community that I was in, and so we can invest them in the long term. And so, this was the year-end, it can be a little bit complicated. What we do is, you'll see money coming in, but we'll have transfers out, so when we transfer money into the capital stabilization, we actually have to transfer it from our working capital account into the trust funds, and it's, you know, it's invested, and at the end of the year, we do market adjustments to the investment vehicle per the auditors. But this, you know, and this came up with our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we met every month, and Sam asked, you know, how much do we have in this trust fund? And so, I did the spreadsheet, and I have market adjustments in there, and everybody's like, well, what's market adjustments? And I'm like, well, we can invest the money for the longer term, so we get a better return. And so, I just wanted to, you know, give this to the board, you can always have them come in and give a presentation or try to answer any questions you may have, just to let you know what we have in our trust funds and, and this is the market value of them, and you can see as you go through the columns, you know, our increases and decreases. The other report that we want to send along monthly is our local receipts report, and it's just our estimated receipts, which is a portion of the budget, we look at that when we approach April, and we put the operating budget together, but as a finance director, this is really what I look at, to see how we're doing financially, because it's driven by the economy. You have your motor vehicle excise, you have other exci, excise, that's what I'm thinking about, other excises, you have licenses and permits, you know, ambulance fees and things of that nature, so it really gives you a good indication, and this is really what drives your free cash. So, when you go into the November town meeting and you're looking at free cash and one-time available funds to fund that capital plan and really make, you know, a dent in what we weren't able to fund for a number of years, your estimated receipts are really driving that train, and it's important, it's important to look at. And so, you will see, so what we do is, we have our estimated receipts for the year, and then we have our actual to date, this is our, you know, as of July 1st. And so, the only way we can kind of gauge that is like, "Okay, last July versus this July, and where are we at?" And, you know, a lot of times, there are timing issues, you'll see additional 264,000 for water and soar, but really, that should have probably been in June because of when the demands went out, and then fees are down a little bit. When I see, you know, one month, maybe them down a little bit, you know, doesn't, I don't have a red flag, but if I see them continually go down in two or three months because you might have timing issues, then I'll really start digging deep and talk to department heads and find out really what's going on. Your special assessments are really your betterments, and they'll always continuously go down. When we have our soar betterments though, they'll go up, which is a good thing. So, I just wanted to let you know, we just want to forward this to the board every month so we can have, meet some reporting requirements, and, you know, I think it would be just informational for you all.
Now, do you anticipate providing the reports, or maybe on a quarterly accumulated basis, to the finance committee, or?
We do put it in their box every month.
Good.
So, they've been getting this, I don't think it's being distributed, but you know what we're going to do is, because we're reporting to the board, I'll make sure that they get on the email.
Great.
Okay?
I got a question. So, if this is as of July 31st, and we're so far below 50%, but yet we're more than halfway through the year...
No, it's a fiscal year, so it's as of July 1st to June 30th.
Oh, no wonder.
So, this is just one month of the whole year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sam?
Yeah, a question about, you said that the, that the balance at the end gets transferred into the, a free cash, right?
Well, it just becomes part of free cash.
But, well, how, you know, how much, what percentage of that, what's the percentage of that to the turnbacks for all the departments that don't spend all their money?
That's a good question. All right, so, when you look at fiscal 16 operations, or 17 operations, probably had about $3 million in turnbacks from the budget, and then we generate probably about $4 or $5 million from estimated receipts.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this is really helpful, I think, you know, sometimes we're looking at, you know, without that, and without seeing it throughout the year, I think you have blinders on when you're trying to think about our budget as a whole, so I think it's helpful for us, for finance committee, to have access to that, so that there's just some context for some of the discussions, and, because obviously, the discussions for finance committee with department heads about what they might ask for, or why they need it, you know, those go on throughout the year, I'm sure as they do with you, so to have that as a bit of context, just for sort of what we're looking at in terms of our health, or this one component of our health as a town is helpful, so.
And, you know, just so you know, when we balance the budget, when we present a balanced budget, and we look at, you know, we look at where we're at revenues versus what our estimated revenues, what we're bringing in, the majority of the revenues that support the operating budget are property taxes, but we use 100% of that to balance the budget, we don't really have to track that because it's fully deferred.
Right.
You know, I mean, our collection rate with, like, every other community is, you know, because of taxes, you have to pay them, it's like 98, 99%.
Great, any other questions?
I would move, no, go ahead.
Sam?
No, I, this is just a comment on the fist, language of our fiscal policies, you know, I've made the point before, but I don't like us shooting for a better bond rating. I'd like us to put in there, the reason we're looking for a better bond rating is because we get a lower interest rate and more access to capital, and I just, I keep seeing it turned around, and I, you know, I'm still bitter about the financial industry and how they misled us with their ratings of things like collateralized, collateralized bond obligations and that sort of thing. So, I don't want to strive to please them, what I want to do is strive to keep our interest rates lower and our access to capital, and I'd like to see us put that up front and not just simply going after a higher bond rating, so, just to...
Yeah, and I understand, I understand your frustration, and...
Well, it's just the language, and that's, I'm not going to go through there line by line unless you want me to come by.
No, well, one of, the way I think about it is, why do you have a good bond rating? Why do you want one, right? So, you want to pay lower interest, especially since we're going to be borrowing nine and a half million dollars for the senior center. And so, the criteria that you have from standard and pores, although people are frustrated with standard and pores, really shows financial health, right? So, what we're doing is in the criteria of standard and pores, and we do mention it that, but that's not the only reason we do it. We do it is to position ourselves to be financially healthy, so when we do have an economic downturn, or if we have a financial, you know, something major comes up that we have to fund, we're able to do that without a decrease in service.
I understand.
And so, I just wanted to make that leap, but, you know, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, we do put...
I would rather stress what you just said.
I know.
As the reason for what we're striving for, you know, so that's the basis. And the bond rating, yes, that's just an acknowledgement by a third party that says, "Hey, you're doing well."
But that is our only access to capital, and being in public, and being in government, that is it. It's standard and pores, and...
And you are following the requirements terrifically, and we appreciate that, because we're in better financial health, and we will have better opportunities for borrowing when we need it. Thank you, Doug.
I would move that we approve the fiscal policy that's been presented.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, so, we only have one more?
Go ahead.
Okay, so, it's the operating budget policy.
Yep.
And really, it's mirrored, if you read through, it's the same thing that we did, you know, last year, Ford's is conservative with the operating budget, which is great, reoccurring revenue, reoccurring expenses, I have to put that in there. The major change, you know, we're going to level fund state aid, we know that the state is, you know, their estimates, the money that they're getting from their taxes is really not meeting their estimates, and they're struggling, but, you know, I do have conversations with our representative, Dave Viera, and the state legislature is, you know, one of their priorities is to fund local government, so, and we don't, a huge budget, part of our budget is in state aid, so I'm comfortable with level funding that right now. You know, we're gonna level fund our local estimated receipts at this point. Also, so the appropriation policy has changed a little bit. I've been meeting with the school superintendent and the business manager, and, you know, in the state of our federal grants that go to the school, we've talked about this a little bit before, is that, you know, we allocate a certain amount of money to the, to the school system, but that's not everything that it takes to run that school system. They run a lot on grants, they have salaries that they pay from grants, and they get a lot of federal grants, and state grants as well, and so they really supplement the operations of the school department. So, as I was discussing with, you know, Ms. Taylor and Mr. Murphy, they are concerned in FY 19, and so we've had some discussions. So, my recommendation would be to, instead of the normal 2.3% to everybody give, to recommend a 2.65%, and what that does, it gives them about $163,000 more in their budget, and they feel that that would be adequate.
Is that something that is taken to the finance committee for review?
Yes, absolutely. Normally, and let me just, this is what's, and let me tell you why I wanted to put it in the, in the budget policy and what we've been doing the last few years. So, the finance committee has a subcommittee for the school department, and they go to all the budget meetings, and they work very closely with them, so they, so they're working with them, and they know what the criteria that the board voted, usually it's 2.3%, they know what the money amount is, and they do that. And so, what has happened in the last few years, some things have, might have come up with the school department, when our assessment went down with Upper Cape Tech, the finance committee recommends taking that decrease and funneling it over to the school, because it's all education, and they did that, but it was after, you know, the budget policy, it was still within the budget policy, but, you know, the finance committee kind of steps in, and then we meet, and we try to make it all happen, if you will. This year has been a concern, and we started meeting a little bit earlier, and I said, "You know, we can do this, so let's put it in the budget policy, let's start talking about it now, instead of seeing, okay, let's see what can happen, you know, if we can, you know, you know, maybe decrease over here, or if, you know, Upper Cape Tech doesn't come in as high, we can funnel it, let them know upfront what we can handle." And, and so that's why I wanted to put it in the budget policy, because we knew about it now, and I think it's probably the best way to handle it, because now we can talk about it and, you know, try to make it all, you know, work out, and now they have, you know, a little bit of a better criteria to work with.
Can you, Doug?
I have a question. So, we're gonna continue to level fund the stabilization and capital stabilization, other post-employment benefits in the amount of $1,672,079, but I didn't see those, where would I see those listed here?
That's the capital plan, so you wouldn't. So, the capital plan's funded with, you know, the one-time revenues, and that's going in November. This operating budget policy, this is what will be coming in front of you in April. Well, actually, I'll, I'll give the budget presentation in January, so you get your budget books right before Christmas, and then I give a budget presentation in January with the criteria that you vote tonight. And that's when you'll see it.
And so, that 1,672 is for all of those?
Yeah.
Or is that each?
Exactly, no, it's for all of them.
That's a total for all?
It's the total, yeah, you put in about 1.6 million into your reserves every year from reoccurring revenues, which is very strong.
Okay, thank you.
I'm approval of the operating budget policy presented.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Nice job.
Next, we have interview vote and appoint a committee member from the cable advisory Michael Feingold? Bye, Nick?
Good evening.
Mr. Feingold?
I'm Michael Feingold, I live at 88 Palmerav, and I'm seeking a position on the cable advisory committee. To be a little bit of background, I was in hotel business for 11 years, which ended, hotel business for 11 years, which ended in 1985, I was the front office manager of Seacrest. In 1985, I became a financial advisor, working here at Advest in Falmouth, and I had the pleasure of working with Sam Patterson at that point. In 2005, I left Advest here in town and founded a firm up in Boston along with three of my partners called Mayflower Advisors. We started with about $200 million and ended up with about $2 billion in assets and 25 employees by 2016. I am the past president of Falmouth Chamber of Commerce, and currently on the board of FCTV here in town, as well as on the board of the Upper Cape Ski Club. Those of you that know me know I'm an avid skier. I retired in May 2016, and it's time to get involved with my town a little bit, so I'm seeking this position. Do you have any questions?
Sure, have you had any opportunity to attend any of the cable advisory committee meetings?
I have not yet done that, because I only decided last month to do this, and I haven't had a chance to attend one of the meetings. But I am familiar with some of the minutes, I've read some of the past minutes, and I've also read the cable Comcast contract, which was from 2011.
Great, other questions? Doug?
So, when we gave an easement to Comcast to do the beach, I think that they promised to give us a new feed in here, a new upgrade, so, I just wanted to make you aware of that, and you seem like a guy that might hold them to that.
I don't even have the position yet, you're making me work today.
It's a slippery slope.
You might get the job.
I move approval for, oh, I'm sorry, did someone have a question?
Turn...
Yes, I just put that piece of paper away.
June 30th, 2020.
There we go.
2020, can you believe it?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mike.
Congratulations.
Glad to have you.
Thank you for volunteering.
Great asset.
Next, we have a discussion of summer 2018 operation of the Carousel of Light, and I see some members of the committee in the audience. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Check some handout for you. Keep on going. Very happy to be here tonight, thank you for having us, my name is Troy Clarkson, I'm the president of the Carousel of Light. With us tonight are some of our board members, we have our vice president, Don Terry, here in the audience, a board member, Jim Bowen, our carousel manager, Beth Duer, and a former board member, Joanne Price, I'm not sure if she's here for us, but I would point that, thank you. Longtime volunteer in town. So, we're here tonight to really begin a dialogue with the town about our operations, as many of you know, but for the benefit of the folks at home, the Carousel of Light is a local nonprofit corporation that exists solely to preserve the Carousel of Light, which is a hand-carved carousel, lovingly carved here in Falmouth by local artist Lance Schinkel. Our nonprofit corporation took ownership several years ago of the carousel, and so this board of volunteers works regularly to preserve it. We operate every year, and Don Terry will give you an update in a couple of minutes, just a brief overview of our operations this last year, but as a way of introducing Don and his work, he's really the boots-on-the-ground that oversees the operation on a daily basis, all of the proceeds, excess proceeds from our operation go to charity. We donate money to the Falmouth Public Schools every year, and have identified other local charities where we've either donated free rides or made donations to at the end. So, all of our proceeds are then turned back into the Falmouth community to, to really further our mission, which is to provide an enrichment of our cultural community here. So, with your indulgence, Madam Chairman, what I'd like to do is to introduce Don Terry, our vice president, who will give you a brief overview of our operations this past year, and then we'll ask Beth to come up to just share with you a couple of stories so that you can see how the carousel has become ingrained into the community, then I'll come back up and just talk about what our plans are for next year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, it's our great pleasure, and it's fun, this incredible work of art, which we'd like to call Art in Motion, that somehow ends up in Falmouth, incredible. So, we won't go, you know, I'm mindful of the time, so we won't go through all of that, but this is our fourth year at Mullin Hall School. First year we came back, we couldn't find a place to operate it. Julian, I remember, came to Lance Schinkel's backyard, where we had his 20 horses, two chariots, and a 1947 mechanism, and so the only thing we did the first summer was spin it around his, his, so, his backyard. But, we got the Mullin Hall School, we're just finishing our fourth year, and it's been terrific. I mean, the metrics of this thing is that the ridership is up about 15%, and that means about 25,000, add them up, about 75 to 80 days, 25,000 riders this year. Most of them paid, Troy said quite a few are free, you know, we give out free coupons at the service center, the 4th of July parade ends at the Mullin Hall School, so every kid gets a, gets a free ride, or two. We give out wooden nickels at the, at the Chamber of Commerce, so that the visitors can, can come and see it too. So, it's about 25,000 rides, and as Troy said, we are fiercely committed to our nonprofit status, so we make sure about that. So, I think we're the only carousel that does not charge adults to come on with a little kid, because the safety is first, and so every place else, basically, you know, the kid goes on, the parents pay too, not here in Falmouth. And we do that particularly because our focus is on Falmouth residents and the frequent riders. So, of those 25,000 riders, we think basically it's about 50/50, about half come from Falmouth, about half are visiting here. And for those, and for those Falmouth residents, they usually buy what we call, you know, a punch card, which is 10 rides for $20, and we ask them all to lose those, those punch cards as soon as they can, so they have to buy some others, but they don't seem to do it. Sometimes in the laundry, but, okay. We think that there are about 500 families, Falmouth families, these are the punch card riders, these are the ones that are coming back over and over and over again, and I'll leave it to Beth to give you a sense of how meaningful this is to a lot of those families. So, yes, I mean, we started this, Jim Bowen started this really, brought the carousel back from California, we thought it was a wonderful piece of art, it is an incredible piece of art. When I finish, I'm gonna give you pictures of these horses. I won't embarrass you by asking you which ones haven't seen these horses yet, but you all should do that. They're incredible. This local guy, Lance Schinkel, starting with a chainsaw, just did it because his daughter was interested in merry-grounds, and all of a sudden, well, not all of a sudden, I guess, but obsessively, now he had 20 horses and two chariots and no place to show them, basically. So, Jim basically got this together, and it's been just terrific. If you take that roughly 25,000 times four, I'm talking about a fair number of people have been able to ride on this have been able to ride on this in the last four years. So, it's fun, it's real art. I think we have become actually part of the social fabric of the town, at least during the summer. And even beyond that, you're the ones who determine what's a public good and not a public good. But I sort of view this almost now, for those 500 families, this is a public good for them. So, we hope to be able to continue with that. And that's all I've got to say.
Quick question before you segue, if you don't mind. Mr. Terry, I know you're a famous lawyer from Watergate, but I wonder if you're also a justice of the peace? Because I think I saw someone getting married on the carousel.
Well, I'm going to let, I'm going to let Beth talk about that. We've got people who get married there, who have their wedding pictures there, who have their anniversaries there. I mean, it's sort of an amazing thing. Beth is the carousel. I mean, Lance Schinkel created it, but if you ever want to have a good time, come to the carousel when we're opening it, which is typically 11 o'clock in the morning, we're open for another couple of weekends. Or when we're shutting it down, in which people are literally running to make sure that they get there before it goes. This woman is the carousel. Her spirit, her enthusiasm, her hugs, her everything makes the carousel what we all want it to be. So, I'm just going to pass this around. She, by the way, along with the kids, named all of the horses on the carousel. Shy Guy, Cherokee, Poseidon, Pearl, Bucky, Skull. Shy Guy's my favorite. But look at the, look at the artistry of that thing. It's incredible. It is. So, I'm happy to be able to do it, but what I do is nothing compared to what Beth has taught us. Come on up.
I've got to cry first. This is just one of the million pieces of art they've given to me.
I'll hold it.
That's from the Ola Spanish camp that comes once a week to come get a free ride on the carousel. And all the kids made their own little horses and presented that to me a couple of years ago. And I've got all these different things that people have given me, pictures and thank me notes. It just makes your heart grow. So, I'm Beth. I've been the manager, I'm going to cry, I'm sorry.
He kind of set you up, it's not your fault, right?
Yeah, he did. Making a mess here, too. I've been the manager since 2014, since it opened. We've had a lot of people work for us. We have Kathleen Bacaraca, we've got Natalie Sanders, and now we have Brendan McHugh, he's on the Clippers, very proud of that. And they all help us out, and it's just, it's just been, I don't know, it's like magical. I've had families come that got engaged and they came right to the carousel. After they got engaged, they were married the next year, exactly the same day. This is Bob and Heather, friends of mine. They came this year for their anniversary, and it's just been awesome. We've had some people come and get married, and not at the carousel, but came and visited. They took a spin for their wedding. And we just have a bunch of kids that have just made my heart grow. I have Teddy that comes, he's from Falmouth, he goes to Mullin Hall, and he's been coming for three years, and he made his own carousel at home. He has a lazy Susan that's on his table, and he made a little carousel to put on top, and he spins it around, and he has a box on the floor that he puts his foot on for the pedal, and he has a toilet paper roll or a paper towel roll that he uses as his microphone to do all of the rolls. He knows them exactly. And he is the cutest thing ever, I'll tell you. And you can give him the microphone, and he'll do it all for you right then and there. We have Caitlin and Zoe. Caitlin's from Falmouth, Zoe's from Michigan. They met on the carousel. They have become best friends, they're in first grade, and they FaceTime each other all the time. When they come, when Zoe comes from Michigan and Caitlin knows they're going to be there, they meet, and it's like that slow-motion movie that you see, and they just grab each other and give hugs, and it's just wonderful. I think one of my goosebump stories is the first year, we had a girl named Rosa Bell, and we had the eight-foot fence, we were in the circle of Mullin Hall, and she came to the carousel, and she was very upset, tormented, you could see it in her eyes, and I could see, because I work at TTA, get in the TIP program, she was autistic, you could just tell, and she was not having a good day. And I had her come in, we were really quiet, and she came around, I had her parents walk around, and all of a sudden, she was on a horse. And I stepped on that pedal, and that girl just was like in a different world, and she was so relaxed and quiet. It was like it gave her parents peace for the first time, I can't tell you how long, you could just see it. And they come every year, they have free rides whenever they want, they just come, we all know who they are, they do have a pass with my name on it that they can get on for free. And if I can give them just that little moment of peace, it's just wonderful. So, I'm going to cry now, so.
Thank you.
So, Beth just shared with you a couple of instances of how we're able to make memories for families from Falmouth and really around the globe. And that, that's our continued mission, and that's our commitment. So, our challenge is, as Don mentioned, the mechanism is a 1947 mechanism. And the wear and tear on the machinery is a challenge and a concern for us. So, every year, we set it up, we take it down. There's a cost that comes with that of several thousand dollars, but the real cost is the wear and tear in the machinery. So, what, alongside the operation, we have a team on our board of directors that's been looking for a permanent location. We've had discussions with many different landowners and organizations. What we believe firmly is that, that the carousel belongs downtown. It's become, as Don mentioned, part of the fabric of the downtown. We have, we're very grateful for the support of the Falmouth Village Association, they've been great partners, the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce have been great partners. And so, we've spent a fair amount of time forging relationships with the business community, with the businesses in the proximity of the carousel, and I'm happy to report to you that, that those relationships today are a success. So, now the challenge for us is to find a permanent location, and so we've been working with, with Julian and with Frank for a while now to try to figure out where the carousel would fit best downtown. And the location we're here to discuss with you tonight is, is on Shore Street Extension. And so, in the PowerPoint that I prepared for you tonight, there is just an overall map of that specific location to orient folks that may not be familiar. It's the, the small road that cuts between Main Street and Catherine Lee Bates in a north-south direction, adjacent to the library to the west in Henous Jewelers and, and some other retail shops to the right. And so, our proposal is to, to locate the carousel adjacent to Main Street on Shore Street Extension. You have also a rendering for you that's part of our long-term plan. What we suggest is that we proceed cautiously, methodically, for next summer, and try this on a temporary basis through the use of a license. That's a license that could be issued by the Board of Selectmen and renewed or revoked, or it could transition into a long-term agreement, which is, of course, what we hope. The advantage of a license is that it is temporary nature, and it gives us the opportunity, and when I speak of us, I mean the big us, the carousel and the town working together as partners, to really try it out, to see if that's a viable location. We believe that it will be, we've done quite a bit of legwork, we've reached out to the partners that I mentioned before, the businesses in the area and the chamber and the Village Association. And we're all excited about that. We've had a couple of, I think, very productive meetings with Julian and with Town Council Frank Duffy to talk about the best way legally to proceed. As you know, town meeting has already considered in past maybe what I'll call a threshold article that gives us the ability to maybe do something with that road long-term, should you choose. I have had the opportunity to discuss this specific proposal with Chief Dunn. He's expressed some of the parameters that, that he would like to see in terms of fortifying the road with some concrete barriers to obviously discourage traffic and to minimize accidents. I was on the phone with Chief Small, literally in the parking lot of Town Hall before I came in, and his commitment is that we continue the dialogue and work together. So, I think we're working with your, with your public safety chiefs to, to try to coordinate this and, and create a scenario where it has widespread support. So, really, tonight, our task is to, is to begin this dialogue with you, answer any questions you may have, and, and to really try to, to move forward to, to next steps. Just speak briefly about why we think this location, of all that we've considered, is the best. One of the most important reasons is that it really continues to fulfill the goal of the revitalization of Main Street. That, for many, many reasons, is something that's, that's very near and dear to my heart. I was actually chairman of the Main Street Revitalization Committee when this revitalization occurred more than 20 years ago. And, and it gives us the opportunity to take a very unique work of art that is unique to Falmouth and find a permanent home for it here in our, in our Falmouth village. And, and I think the importance of that can't be overstated, the fact that this man lovingly carved these horses. If any of you have seen him do that, because he's done it in Pagnone Park a couple of times. To take a block of wood with a chainsaw and somehow use that incredible brain of his to shape it with a chainsaw into a horse, and then a hammer and chisel to finish it off and then to paint it, simply to fulfill the wishes and the dreams of his daughter, is, is something that's just incredible. And we have the opportunity to have that permanently here in Falmouth. I'd be remiss if I didn't just very, very briefly remind those that may not have heard the story or have hadn't heard it in a while, how this all happened. Lance Schinkel came to a group of us more than 20 years ago, and that original group of local volunteers included myself and Jim Bowen and names that you've heard many, many times, volunteer legends in this community, names like Red Sherman and Grace Bardellis and Don McCarthy. And, and we all got together and began this journey more than 20 years ago. Lance and the carousel traveled west for a while, but they realized, as we knew all along, that the carousel belonged in Falmouth. And so, here we are with an opportunity to, to make that happen on a permanent basis. And so, my hope is that we can, we can forge that partnership with the town, and we can work together to fulfill that goal. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to forge this partnership with you, and I look forward to working together with you as we move forward.
Well, we appreciate being, you know, kind of updated on your plans. It's obviously a very successful nonprofit endeavor, and as you say, very much a part of the fabric of the town. I also, at the 9/11 memorial this morning, had a conversation. Superintendent Nancy Taylor mentioned that she had verified, you know, that there would be no conflict, for example, with buses and that kind of thing with the school, and so she didn't have any objections at all on that basis. And just from there, questions from the board, Doug?
Yeah, I just, can you clarify where you're proposing to put this? You said in the road, or?
Yes, so the, the plan is to actually, and, and this sheet here is our long-term plan, because what this plan would do, should we make this permanent, would actually be to create additional parking, which I know is a significant concern of the town. For this test run, what we would propose to do is to place the carousel actually in Shore Street Extension. So, we would close it at Main Street and then just north of the carousel, but leave it open as it intersects with Catherine Lee Bates, so that there'd be continued access to both the parking up and down the road and to the library parking lot. So, what we would propose is to close just a portion of the road, and only for, for this trial period for our operation next summer, so for purposes of discussion tonight, Memorial Day to, to maybe Columbus Day of next year.
It can't fit just on the road, it needs to go onto the grass also, is that the size of it?
Well, I've been out there with a tape measure.
Yeah, you've got to come to the podium for the folks at home.
The, the road is 45 feet wide. The carousel is 36 feet in circumference, but then you need some fencing around, so it'll be a tight fit. But I think it'll just about do it. I mean, may go a little bit over into...
But in the permanent solution, you'd need to build a housing for it?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Is, in the ideal world, is it not an option to be on the green grass?
Right, that's what I was going to ask.
So, yes, in an ideal world, we think that that's a fantastic long-term solution. We have had some discussions over the years with the library trustees. They've been less than enthusiastic about that option, but we hope, as many of us have, that they will come to love the idea of the carousel in Falmouth Village.
It may be unfair, but we started with that idea. And I won't say, of course, who, but one of the reactions was, well, what would we do with all of those kids coming near the library? So, we'll just leave it at that. Yeah, that would be the best place.
Any other questions from the board?
Well, that was my next question, why not on the lawn? No, I got it.
So, I think that this was a great kind of introductory presentation of the entire, you know, circle of possibilities for the public. I think that it's something that will come under the board's consideration for a vote in the, you know, probable near future. So, I want to use this opportunity to ask anyone here in the audience, and certainly anyone at home, if you have thoughts or questions, think about, you know, forwarding them to the board by email or to the, the directors of the carousel. Is there anyone here might have a question?
I guess I could...
Chief.
Sorry. Just, I did have a conversation with Troy the other day, and I just gave him my concerns as to, first of all, public safety. That was the big piece, and that's what we talked about, if you decide to allow that to be on the street. Just with everything that's going on in our society today, I would request some concrete barriers be put in there. I mean, we just had a car drive into a building the other day. God forbid, they were driving into a carousel with kids on it.
Right.
The other piece is with the Shore Street Extension, I mean, the carousel's a wonderful item to Falmouth. I mean, I don't want to be a downer here, and I said that to Troy, is, we use that extension piece when we close Main Street as, as a, as a pass-through. We use it for the street fair, we also use it for the road race, and we use it for the, sometimes we use it for the...
Marathon.
There's another event, though.
Marathon?
Yeah, it might be the marathon, things like that. So, and if we have an incident on Main Street, it's an area to pass through. As I said, Troy, pushing the traffic up to Gifford Street is not ideal for us because of the amount of traffic that we're pushing up in that direction.
Megan?
I guess when I thought, Chief, when you were saying public safety, I thought that's what you were, less the barriers, I get that, but I thought you were talking about just sort of losing that, that pass, and so, for both the police and given that there's a fire station there. But I guess my other just general comment would be, if we're going to do something as significant as potentially closing a road, I'd like to see us really consider a permanent solution that maybe looks at some other areas, because I don't know that closing that road forever is a permanent solution, given sort of all the many different concerns that we have. So, you know, this, if we're going to think about something, about placing this somewhere that really highlights it for all the reasons that we talk about, it might, I think, in my opinion, it's worthwhile to really put our heads to the problem and think about where could this carousel live permanently. Maybe it's, you know, I mean, there's lots of options. I know we're talking about the library lawn just as one, one place, but, and I'm sure you guys have thought about this many times.
Well, I think part of maybe follow-up could be that the, you know, the, the directors could just do an outline. I know you've probably looked at dozens of places that we would think of, so it'd be great to have that background for when it comes before the board again.
Another question. So last I heard that you were considering the parcel over near behind the Lawrence School. What happened with that?
Well, actually, Don's efficiency as a project proponent and as an attorney, I think, in that instance fulfilled a good community need, but he actually advocated for and worked with Julian, this is going back a few years now, to have Bank of America donate or sell that parcel, which is now called the Shibert Hathaway or something.
Right.
And it was acquired by the 300 Committee. So we'd be happy to work with them if they would consider a long-term lease or even donating the property to a less financially enriched nonprofit. That would be wonderful. But I'm very encouraged from what I hear tonight, because I really think that what's needed for this project, for this work of art, to find a permanent home in Falmouth is to have champions in this room at that table. And the fellow standing to my right is one of the most, one of the hardest-working volunteers I know. He's retired, and he puts in full-time hours at the carousel. But he goes south for the winter. Connecticut, but it's still south. So, you know, and we have a wonderful group, wonderful board of directors, but as you know, because many of you volunteer on nonprofit boards, it's exceedingly difficult to continue to get folks motivated year after year after year. So we would welcome a partnership with this board, and maybe that's one of the solutions from tonight, is that a couple of you guys work with a couple of us to come up with a list and move that forward so that we can present to the community a consensus location.
When that space became available right next to the pond a few years ago, and we got Bank of America not to auction it to the highest bidder, it's a beautiful spot, and you may have heard this before in all of your deliberations, where are people going to park? And there is a parking lot across the street, and Bank of America doesn't necessarily use most of that parking space, so that's the issue. But without access to decent parking, that just wouldn't work.
Good point.
Our original location, now this is going back 20-something years, was behind the Weeks Block, which is the group of shops right across from us. So it would have been adjacent almost to the Chamber of Commerce. And we were moving forward, and the then owners of that parcel were going to donate a piece of land to us. And the impediment then, which thanks to the leadership of the Board of Public Works serving as the Board of Selectmen, that problem's been taken care of, but we couldn't locate there back then because the pump station was problematic for many reasons. Not the least of which, you know, you don't want to ask kids to ride a carousel and, well, you know. So, but we're excited. You can tell there's lots of enthusiasm here because, you know, this is something that... I was down in Washington for work a couple of years ago, and this mechanism, this very mechanism is featured outside of the Smithsonian on the National Mall. In 1947, Alan Herschel mechanism, there's a replica of it, or, excuse me, the actual mechanism. And people come from all over the world to see that carousel in those not-so-beautiful, I don't even know what they're made of, plastic horses. And here, you get to ride on beautiful hand-carved wooden horses that you'll see nowhere else in the world.
First thing that comes to mind, I would say, is not this corner, but the opposite corner next to Pagnone Park on the corner of the grass, I think would be a nice setting, but it's just my first impression.
We're really pleased by the enthusiastic response. We'll figure this out. But one of the reasons why we're here is we really don't think that we can keep going or should keep going year to year, picking the mechanism up and down and this and that, when we know in the community if we could find a permanent place. I think we could raise the money for a very tasteful little pavilion. We could open up more than 75 days a year, and it would be a permanent place. So we don't want to, I don't want to say it'd be a jeopardy, but I think the current situation needs to be...
But time has come.
Yeah, I think you hearing that recognition on the board when they're talking a bit more about a permanent home, rather than, you know, not that this isn't, this is a great interim possibility, but I think that, you know, it only kind of kicks the can down the road a year or two, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
Next, we have an update on senior center process. Mr. Suso.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of weeks ago, I had transmitted to the board an interim update or an update at that time regarding where we are in the process. I'm flipping through, looking for my exhibit as well. But I know, in essence, I can easily summarize... Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. The, this really builds on what was transmitted two weeks ago, about three weeks ago. Town's consultant is completing the work in preparation for the upcoming, thank you, the upcoming site plan review by the planning board. And I know I reported on that back, I guess it was back on August 14th, and so it's, yeah, about three, almost a month ago now. And that site plan review is anticipated in the month of October. Obviously, we're completing an internal review to make certain that as soon as the, or we will be completing an internal review, as soon as the consultant is done with their preparations for the submission for the site plan, we want to review it internally and make certain that it is as complete as possible in an appropriate form. And then transmitted with the anticipation that the planning board can review it timely in the month of October. That's critical to allowing us to proceed with the overall concept, and the board will recall that we had made that representation early on, going back as far as town meeting earlier this year in a time when the debt service was being proposed and ultimately voted on and approved, the debt exclusion in the month of May. We've also continued to gather information on the pros and cons of the two alternative procurement models, the construction manager risk and the design, the more conventional design bid-build process, in anticipation that the selectmen, of course, will make that final determination, I'm presuming in the coming 30 days. And to confirm, the owner's project manager, which is another procurement step, that step differs in the CM at risk and the design bid-build process. So that decision needs to be made before we can move forward in procurement on the owner's project manager, which would be the next critical step. And of course, we see those unfolding simultaneously as we work with the planning board on their site planning review process that I just mentioned. I'm also assuming that, subject to confirmation, obviously, Madam Chair, from you and the other members of the board, that you'll likely be appointing a, some type of formal senior center building committee later this calendar year. You recall that earlier in the calendar year, we received, curiously, we received no responses when we advertised it. We think that was just a byproduct of some challenging timing. That was back before the debt exclusion was placed on the ballot. It has been strongly recommended to us that the board consider strictly limiting the number of persons on the committee, to keep it a committee that is small enough to be workable and functional and efficient, as well as considering directing your efforts to include practitioners with hands-on experience in the building and construction process itself, again, to maximize the input and the effectiveness of that group. And that basically is my current update. We'll certainly be knowing a whole lot more within the coming 30 days with proceeding to the planning board. And by the way, our proposal that we anticipate bringing forward at this present time appears to be increasing the net number of spaces available in the Gus Candy New Senior Center complex by over 50 additional parking spaces, which will well-serve all users in that area very significantly. And the same, at the same time, we're attempting to, including that, improvements to the access point at Scranton Avenue, which has been problematic and as the board is aware, as you've already approved in terms of the concept, a right-turn-in-only access for westbound traffic coming on Main Street and coming into this new complex. So we think it's going to enhance public safety. We will also be separating the police vehicle ingress and egress from the balance of the traffic into this complex, which we think is going to greatly enhance public safety as well as maneuverability in the entire area. And we think it will benefit everyone that has occasion to utilize all the complexes in this very important area. So that's, we're nearly completed with the internal process. I'm excited about what's to come and going forward to the planning board and be sharing further information on that with this board, obviously, as we're very close to that nearing completion on it.
That is, that's a great report. There've been a lot of questions raised in terms of the progress, and it's very important to get this started in a careful and really just a way that can be a good platform to jump off and have a really successful, great project. The fact of, you know, having a committee that has some public building experience, I think is going to be very important, and we'll be looking at that soon. I expect, as the town manager just stated, the decision of which route to go, whether design-bid-build or CM at risk will be before the board, either the next meeting or the meeting after that. Otherwise, you know, I only want to reiterate the commitment that this board has to, you know, produce a very timely and excellent senior center project, and at the same time, look at that entire area and make sure that we enhance, you know, the egress and the utilization, the parking spaces for everyone that's in that complex right now. Any questions, Megan?
I was just going to say, I think the, you know, it's really a balance of moving forward with a project that's long overdue but being methodical so that, you know, you're not getting ahead of yourself. There are a number of components, the parking piece of it really being one of the first that needed to be completed. So, you know, I know folks are wondering what's gone on, and, you know, I think this is a lot of the behind-the-scenes work that really has to be done before we jump the gun. You know, it is really imperative. I think this board has made it clear that managing this project well and coming in at the budget that was set with the best product is really the priority, and that requires kind of this methodical process. And so, you know, I think it's good to hear that we're kind of making, ticking off those tasks that really need to be done. And then that next big piece is where we're looking for that involvement from the community with this working group. So it's good to hear that. You know, as Sue's saying, I think a lot of folks felt like not much was happening, and in fact, quite a bit has been happening. So it's good to hear that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have vote articles and execute the warrant for the September 2017 annual town meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Peter Johnson Staub and I are teaming up on a PowerPoint, sort of a brief bulleted summary of the warrant articles that are before the board. Keep in mind, this is just your determination about placing the items on the warrant. These are not your recommendations on articles come two weeks hence. We are in a little bit of an expedited process. Jennifer Petit referred to that earlier with her financial report, because we are essentially a week earlier with the November town meeting than we have been at sometimes in the past. So also, next week, you'll have presentations from the proposed petitioners, as you always do, but rather than having two weeks in between the petitioner presentation and your recommendations on the articles, they'll be the same night, again, because of that compressed timeframe.
So for this presentation, the only discussion might be to reorganize the numbers. We're not going to be taking discussion or certainly not public discussion at this point. This is just to set it out and approve it.
Correct. And for the convenience of the board, we do have the summary that is a brief PowerPoint, which we can go through...
Please.
At this point, if that's agreeable, Madam Chair.
Yep.
And I want to thank Peter for his excellent, professional assistance in pulling all of this together, and he and I have teamed up to sort of split the 29 or so articles roughly in half. So as you can see from the PowerPoint, Article 1, I'm taking the simpler 15 sections.
I think that makes sense, and I want to make it clear to the public that the board this year has asked for more information earlier, as much as can be obtained, and so this is the start of what we hope will be the initial education for the board, for the public, and in moving forward. Doug?
Just for convenience, should we then make our motion per slide? I mean, sometimes we've done it by page.
Oh, that's a good way to organize it.
Certainly do that if, for the convenience of the board, it's going to be welcomed.
Great idea.
Okay.
Quite comfortable with that. Saying that, I'll just leap in if that's agreeable, Madam Chair.
Please.
Article 1, the board's certainly familiar with that. Articles, pardon me, reports from committees and town offices, those unfold in cooperation with the town moderator, of course. Staff members here have no specific reports to date, but that's a moving target, so we'll see. Article 2 is appropriate funds for unpaid bills. Again, that's one which is familiar to us as bills from the current fiscal year come forward, they'll need to be dealt with. Article 3, supplement the fixed fiscal year 2018 budget. Again, that's a familiar one, where our budget projections, as you know, that's a budget that goes to, that I bring to you initially just before the Christmas holiday, and you deal with early in December, and that goes with the finance committee, ultimately to town meeting. So it was quite a while ago that the original work on the FYE team budget came together and some things that are unanticipated. One of the ones noted there is the wastewater electricity account. There needs to be a set aside for that. Those are funds that heretofore had been paid by wind turbines, which are not now available. Article 4, capital improvements. Jennifer Petit made that presentation to you in summary form. You have the expanded form of that. That is Article 4, to appropriate funds to maintain infrastructure and replace equipment. And certainly, if the board's comfortable, we...
Can we put Articles 1, 2, 4 on the warrant?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Article 5 is the non-capital improvements article. Again, beginning, I think, first time last November, we split these articles into capital and non-capital. They're both represent bigger and lumpier projects, as I call them. It's to appropriate funds for the one-time expenditures that are not associated specifically with capital assets. Article 6 is a petition article. We've spread the petition article, sprinkled them around in the warrant, if that is agreeable to the board. Obviously, you're not bound by this order.
On that issue, just for the board's consideration, while town manager's going through this, there's, I just wondered if we wanted to put the rezoning questions together? For example, I think 16 might be, I don't know, put it right before that? Just bear that in mind, I think, while we're, while he's describing it, just see what you think.
I think that's a good idea, and another grouping would be those that have to do with staff compensation, which is the proposed Articles 8, 21, 22, 23, and 24. We might look at combining those so that we're kind of dealing with the same kind of issues.
Did you get that, Peter?
Well, we, I thought we were going to deal with that at the end.
We can, I just want to see if you caught what you said.
Do we want to put them all on and then renumber them?
Yeah.
Makes sense.
That's what I think we should do.
So maybe your vote, if you care to, is just to affirm that they're going, they'll go on the warrant, and then you can renumber at the end?
That makes sense.
I thought that's what we were doing.
Sounds like a good way to go.
Great.
Okay, so Article 6 is, again, a petition article. That is a rezoning, as noted, at Central Avenue. Petitioners brought one that would change the current zoning, which is B3, and agricultural B to in the entire parcel being a B3. Article 7, another petition. By the way, nine petition articles, the most that anyone, at least in the selectman and manager's office, can recall having in... managers' office, can recall having in that, in recent history. Article Seven, petition rezoning parcel off Blacksmith's Shop Road, as you can see there, to facilitate the location of a solar array from agricultural A to lead industrial C2.
Moving Articles Five through Seven on the warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next three articles that we happen to number eight through 10 in our draft to you, updates to noncriminal fines. This from the town council Frank Duffy responding to some needs for some updates. One would add the wastewater superintendent for sewer and septic issues with no changes in the fine amounts. Next would increase fines for mooring violations after the first offense. And in your breakout, it gives the amount of the fine increase being proposed. And finally, to add orders of the Board of Health to make that available for noncriminal fines with no change in the fine amounts as well. Article Nine, an amendment to the historical, from the Historical Commission. It's a housekeeping on the, a recommendation on the agricultural zone. And Article Ten would amend Chapter Forty-Nine of Town Meeting, allowing for electronic counting of votes in place of a manual count.
Move putting Articles Eight through 10 on the warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And pardon me, on the earlier one I mentioned on AG, that's the Attorney General. My misspoke, pardon me. It's on the recommendation of the Attorney General. On to Article Eleven and Twelve. Eleven, draft, Article Eleven amends Chapter Sixty-Five, the beach and park regulations. This from town council would authorize the selectmen to adopt beach and park regulations. Article Twelve is a petition article that we are a bit familiar with. There've been some publicity on it. A petition to amend beach regulations. It would prohibit recreational activities such as tossing or kicking any sort of ball or frisbee, flying kites, prohibiting the use of audio device audible beyond 15-foot radius, and those two on this slide.
Moving Articles Eleven and Twelve on the warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Article Thirteen, establish revolving fund bylaw. It's based on a change in Massachusetts general law, would allow the Board of Selectmen to adopt and reauthorize revolving funds for purposes defined by general law, provided liabilities do not exceed the available balance.
Moving Article Thirteen on the warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Articles Fourteen and Fifteen. Fourteen would be an amendment to the zoning bylaw. It extends the grandfathering timeframe to act on a building permit. When a zoning bylaw is amended after the permit has been issued, and this is to mirror a change in state law to allow the owners 12 months to commence construction after a zone change. Similar approach on Article Fifteen, amending the zoning bylaw again. This is grandfathering the timeframe to act on special permits, as opposed to building permits, when the zoning bylaw is amended after the permit is issued. In this case, again, it mirrors a change in the state law to allow the owners three years to commence construction after a change in zoning. Currently, I believe it's two years.
Moving Articles Fourteen and Fifteen to the warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and I will pass the microphone to my colleague, Peter Johnson Staub.
Article Sixteen is a recreational marijuana bylaw change. So, as you are well aware, the town voted to prohibit recreational marijuana establishments in the town. This simply reinforces that general bylaw prohibition in the zoning code. Article Seventeen is a petition article to accept Chapter Forty, Section Eight-L to establish an agricultural commission. Obviously, we have an agricultural commission already. There's some question of interpretation about the particular statutory authority that the, that the agricultural committee has under a special act that was approved a couple of years ago. So, the, some members of the agricultural commission are seeking to petition this article to clarify exactly what those statutory roles are. Some of those authorities relate to authority to buy and manage land and to receive grants.
Moving Adding Articles Sixteen and Seventeen to the warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article Eighteen is to accept Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Three-F and Three Quarters. Yes, that's an actual section. It is to adopt a cable fund in compliance with the change in state law. This merely allows us to continue past practice in terms of segregating those funds for future use for cable broadcast-related purposes.
Moving Article Eighteen to the warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article Nineteen is a petition article to affirm prior town meeting votes with regard to the Coonamessett River. We put in a little bit more history here to provide some context, just to your request, Madam Chairman, to begin getting information a little bit earlier on in the process. So, this relates to the restoration of the river and cranberry growing at Coonamessett River. In 2005, there were three articles on the subject. Two of the three passed on closed votes and those were to encourage continued cranberry farming on the Coonamessett River. The town did follow up with multiple requests for proposals, seeking cranberry growers to lease bogs on the river and a lease was awarded in 2008. In 2013, that private lesor cranberry grower terminated his lease, declaring that organic farming on the river was unsustainable. In 2006, the Coonamessett bogs lost their exemption status under the applicable environmental regulations. I am told by Jennifer McKay, our conservation administrator, that at this point, or as of 2016, a notice of intent would be required in order to reestablish cranberry growing on the Coonamessett River. And part of that requirement would include replacing acre for acre, any cranberry, reestablishment of cranberry growing on the Coonamessett River would require that a wetlands be created elsewhere to compensate for that loss of wetlands on the Coonamessett River. In Jan, on January 9th of this year, the board will recall that you held a Chapter Two-O-Seven hearing. That's, Two-O-Seven refers to the town bylaws to approve a change of use for the river to restore the Coonamessett River. So, that's just context for this petition article. And lastly, I should just mention that, again, the purpose of the article, what the article calls for is to affirm prior town meeting votes. It's not clear that there's any binding legal impact of this article, whether approved or not approved.
Moving Article Nineteen on the warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article Twenty is a petition article. It is also a non-binding article that urges the state legislature to approve House Bill Thirty-Two-Eight-One, which relates to divestment from thermal coal companies. Specifically, it is about the State Pension Reserve Investment Trust Fund, otherwise known as the PRT, to divest its holdings in thermal coal companies. Article Twenty-One seeks to amend the Salary Classification Plan. This relates to one specific position, the, what is now the Facilities Maintenance Manager position is a Grade Eight. It would replace that position with a Grade Nine Facilities Manager position and that seeks town meeting approval of an arbitrator's award resulting from a union grievance.
Before I make the motion, I'll just reiterate, these are articles. We have no choice if the petitioners, but to put them on the warrant, I know Article Twenty is the kind that our moderator would hope we would not see on our warrant over and over again, but I would move to put Articles Twenty and Twenty-One on the warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article Twenty-four is to fund a union agreement for AFSMI Unit C, and that is our communication officers, and that wage adjustment would be retroactive.
I think we skipped Twenty-two and Twenty-three.
I'm sorry.
Yep. There we go.
Let's try Article Twenty-two, to fund FY 2017 COLA for the town clerk. At the time that we voted the town meeting warrant in April, we did not have the COLAs built into the specific salary voted for the town clerk. So, this article provides for that same percentage increase that was received by other town employees. Article Twenty-three is a COLA for, sorry, I have a fly that's chasing me. Article Twenty-three is a COLA adjustment for pensions. Under state law, the COLA adjustment for Massachusetts municipal pensions is not applied to the total pension. It's only applied to a portion and there is some flexibility with pension board by pension board to adjust that base salary amount to which the COLA or CPI adjustment is applied. This article would increase that base from 12,000 to 14,000.
Moving Articles Grade Two and Grade Three on the warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, Article Twenty-four, to fund the union agreement for AFSMI Unit C, which is the communication officers. This was just ratified by the union and that would be retroactive to July 1st.
Moving Article Twenty-four on the warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article Twenty-five is a petition article to take property at Lantern Lane and Main Street by eminent domain. As the board is familiar, this is the Liberty Green Project, so-called. There is a comprehensive permit under Chapter Forty-B, seeking to construct 104 units of housing. That is in the application review process. Actually, the ZBA did issue a permit and that permit has been appealed by the petitioner to the Massachusetts Housing Appeals Commission. There is also an abudders complaint brought to the court seeking to block that, that permit as well. The town council Frank Duffy has noted that the town of Burlington also used an eminent domain, taking in attempt to block a Forty-B housing proposal, but that taking was ultimately overturned by the courts. Again, this is a petition article.
Moving Article Twenty-five on the warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article Twenty-six is a petition article to fund a water quality monitoring program for Born's Pond. The article seeks $75,000 for the second year of a three-year nitrogen monitoring evaluation. However, the results of the first year are being deferred because there was an algae bloom that prevented the survey of the shellfish from being conducted on a timely basis. So, I can't speak for the petitioner, but it may be that this article is not needed this year.
Moving Article Twenty-six on the warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Article Twenty-seven is a petition article to fund repair and maintenance of athletic fields. This article seeks $47,500 for maintenance and repair of three upper fields at Trotting Park and the lacrosse and football fields on Sandwich Road. We would point out in terms of timing that the petitioner had no way of knowing that the town manager was going to be recommending $200,000 under a separate article for maintenance and repair of athletic fields.
Just to that point, can I ask you what type of follow-up, if any? I think some, I'm noticing that this may be sort of a first-time petitioner that, so in terms of, you know, whether or not that petitioner is watching tonight and knows, you know, I'm just wondering if there's any follow-up or if.
Absolutely.
To just sort of let them know, maybe they withdraw it, maybe they don't, but just so that they have that sense going in of, as to what happened tonight.
Right. So, the, some of these, some of the petitioners for this article came from the Recreation Committee and I will be.
You're going in, right.
Meeting on Wednesday with them to discuss this very point.
Great, thank you.
Moving Article Twenty-seven on the warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article Twenty-eight is Tony Andrews Farm land acquisition. I sound like a broken record when I say the board is well aware, as you are, but for the public's ongoing information, this article would authorize the purchase of approximately 36.7 acres. That farm property does include two residences at 394 and 398 Old Meeting House Road. The purpose of this article is to acquire the land and to continue to preserve the farming use that has been in existence on that property for many, many years. I believe it's approaching 100 years. There would be a conservation restriction for purposes of agriculture and open space placed on the majority of the land, with the exception of those lots that already have residential properties on them. The total cost of the land acquisition is $2 million. There's an additional $50,000 in incidental costs and the funding sources are multiple. They include free cash, community preservation funds, a very generous donation from the 300 Committee, which was our partner and a great source of the energy and initiative behind this initiative. They are contributing $450,000.
A quick question. So, I was asked by a town meeting member today whether, you know, there was a lot of outreach and with respect to possible uses or, you know, how the farm might be run, and I just wondered if the 300 Committee or Ad Committee or anyone had planned to give a presentation at town meeting, sort of a business plan? I don't know if you know that.
Yeah, I can respond to that. I think the answer is that it is too early to present a specific business plan. So, we have been working to negotiate with a private operator, a license agreement for year one, and the business plan, in a nutshell, would be for the licensee to operate the farm at its own expense. And the reason for that is to provide for a year for the town to work on those issues of what do we, how do we want to structure the request for proposals? How can the town insulate itself from potential future costs and liabilities associated with the farm? And, you know, certainly, the, that issue of the finances and structuring this in a way that's really viable, that, that can be done in such a way that, on the one hand, we want to strike that balance between, there are a lot of purposes that various community members want to see happen on this site. And those of us who work in town finance, you know, are very concerned about the finances and not having the town have ongoing costs related to those purposes.
I think town meeting members also have that concern. So, I think it would be great, just as you posed that discussion here, if, you know, if someone from, you know, 300 Committee or another involved, a part, might want to just give that explanation because there's a couple of questions about, it's a little cart before the horse, you know, put the money together and then do the plan, so, but I think that it makes perfect sense when it's explained. So, that might be really helpful.
Sure, we can certainly do that.
And to that point, Sue, I mean, even at our last town meeting, the chair of the Finance Committee raised some of those concerns, you know, just what, what is the town getting into? So, I think, I agree. I think there's a fair amount of sentiment as to just where the process is at when it comes to that piece of it, sort of the planning. So, even just an update as to the, you know, it's good to hear that, that, those concerns are being worked through.
Sure, happy, happy to do that. And I just, I'll just mention very briefly, when this came up at the Community Preservation Committee, you know, that was even happening while the purchase and sale was still being negotiated. And the way the application to the CPC was framed was the intent is to preserve farming to the extent that it's feasible and if, at any point, it's not feasible, and I know that there are many people in the community who are passionately resistant to the concept that it might ever not be feasible, but if we ever reach that purpose, the fallback is it becomes conservation land. So, you know, I think.
So, there's a plan?
There's, there's a plan and, you know, there's, there's a fallback position. So, in no way does purchasing this land require the town to, year after year after year, lay out money that it does not choose to or wish to to support farming.
And that's, I think, been a concern, so it's terrific to get that information out early so that everyone can hear it.
Moving Article Twenty-eight on the warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And lastly, another article related to Tony Andrews Farm. This is simply an article that would authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter a lease or management contract for up to 20 years. The intent would be to solicit competitive proposals from qualified private entities or individuals to manage the farm. So, this article is not to authorize a specific lease to a specific party. It's simply that the general law limits the length of a lease that they, that the Board of Selectmen can enter without town meeting authorization. So, this would be a one-time vote to authorize the board, should it choose to, and that's not to say you have to do a 20-year lease. This article is up to 20. You could choose to do a one-year lease. No, no obligations, just provides a little bit more flexibility to the board over the course of the next year as you consider how best to.
Parameters, right.
To contract that.
Moving Article Twenty-nine on the warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it.
Okay, so, other suggestions on order, anything that we haven't already mentioned?
I'm just going to stop. I'm just going to step up.
Sure.
Just to try to group this staff compensation and, I guess, description, I would move, I would exchange Articles 8 and 20. 20 is the petitioner's article. It would cluster the, some of them together, not all of them.
I'm sorry, Santa, help me out. So, Article 8 is to amend the provisions, that's a noncriminal disposition article?
That's correct.
Okay.
But it has to do with reassigning staff responsibilities.
No, I'm sorry. No, that's just fines.
Pardon?
It's, that, Article 8 relates to fines, so it's not about any staff salaries or responsibilities.
But doesn't it include enforcing official and...
It identifies who the enforcement officials are?
Yes.
Okay.
So, there is a difference, it defines a role...
Okay.
Relative to staffing, that, and I just, that's the only reason why I thought that it might go along with changing compensation of staffing.
Okay, sure.
Just grouping those staff-related articles together, if you...
Sure, there's logic there.
Sure. And, you know, while I'm at it, on that Article 8, under that first grouping there, it has to do with sewers and septic systems, I'm surprised that you didn't have the health agent down there as an enforcing official.
Health agent already has that authority.
They do already, good.
It just expands it.
They deal with it all the time, I know. So, I don't know.
Anybody else?
That was it, as far as my observation.
Anybody else?
You had some others, didn't you?
He's already recorded.
So, we'll move the zoning articles together.
Right.
And we'll move Article 8 between 21 and 22.
Before 21, okay, is what I was suggesting that you just...
Before 21?
I was trying to...
Sure.
So, you don't have too much of a scrambling or reordering. If you just swap 8 and 20...
Yep.
Just switch those two, the rest of the order would stay more or less the same.
I see.
I don't know whether you were thinking about...
Yep.
Some other strategy on timing of the first night and the second night or whatever.
Great.
We just, the only, one rationale was we didn't want to put all the petition articles at the end. We had some feedback that that wasn't the preferred approach.
I agree. That's a good idea.
Great, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks. Moving on, we have a further discussion regarding Barnstable, Barnstable County Community Survey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Peter will help me bring up a PowerPoint. The board, I think, has seen, and back on August 14th, I had transmitted to the board some summary comments about the community survey, and I think that sort of stands on its own. And I know the, the board, since that time, has been given and seen copies of the multi-page survey. It's divided into three primary parts, as you will recall. And Madam Chair, what I'm suggesting here, if the board, to the extent the board is comfortable, is I have extracted, rather than go through page by page by page, there are so many pages here...
Yeah, this is very helpful.
I've extracted certain sections from each part of the survey with my humble suggestions as to what you might wish to consider, were you to agree. And Madam Chair, if it's, you deem it appropriate, if the board votes agreement with these items going forward, then I would batch them and transmit to the Barnstable County Commissioners the summary of the board's point of view on what you would see if you concur as the key areas, so...
I move agreement with this slide.
Second?
Thank you. It speaks for itself, I guess.
Great.
Yep, need a vote?
Well, we don't, I don't think we need a vote till the end. I think it might get a little confusing.
I don't know.
Want to go slide by slide?
Anyway, we don't, we don't worry about going back.
All right, so we'll do it by vote, then. Do you want to post that as an actual...
I do.
And I seconded it.
And he seconded it.
Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Section 2 and Part 1, the County Purchasing Division, I won't read all that. It is a great service. We utilize it significantly, and I also suggest on the next item that we are very interested in additional collaborative procurement opportunities. However, I defer in suggesting that we need to have the county act as a regional procurement office because we handle our own procurements on a number of significant and complex projects, but utilize our services where it's appropriate, so that's more reasonable.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Section 3, that one's, I think, pretty straightforward. We talked a lot about the dredge issue. We now have a second county dredge. In fact, have on my schedule a meeting coming up, middle of the month, on that topic, and they have another one on, I believe, Open Cape the same day. So, I humbly recommend that to the board for your concurrence.
A quick caveat before we vote on this, just there, there's been some discussion various places about whether a smaller dredge to get into tighter areas might be something the county should consider, so maybe we can include that in our comments.
Happy to do so.
So, you say we are going to have a presentation on the county dredge and its allocation to various...
I don't have a presentation prepared. I've been invited to attend one.
Ah, I see.
At the county level, and I've RSVP'd that I will be attending.
It just seems like we don't get enough time out of that dredge when you think that, you know, we have all these estuaries, all this shoreline, and a significant proportion of the population of the county.
That's the point of the meeting. There's going to be feedback about that since there's now two dredges, there's double the opportunity, and the best way to structure that and make sure that through the consolidated permitting process, that's a little, you know, lasts a little while, that the schedule can be kept, and so that appointments can actually be followed through with. I think, you know, Doug might have attended a Plymouth meeting, in fact...
I did.
That raised some of those concerns.
I guess it's not appropriate to discuss it now, but just like to see us deal with it.
Is it being used outside our county? I guess I heard the other...
I can't answer that, I don't know that.
Other municipalities that are not...
I've heard that.
I've heard the same thing, yes.
So, that can be something that I'm sure Julian can follow up on. Could you just, I'm sorry, because you just popped in when you were talking about this meeting, there's an Open Cape meeting on the same day?
Right.
I believe it is on the same day, yes.
I'm going to be attending that.
And you're going to be attending that, okay, just wanted to make sure.
You're welcome to.
So, in the future, I'd like to get a list of what our dredging wish list is and how far behind we are.
That's a good idea.
That's a great idea. Report, priorities and...
Yeah, just dredging in general and...
That's a great idea.
I move approval of this slide.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Funny.
We welcome any strategies for kidnapping one of these dredges, if that's being suggested.
That one in New Jersey is still for sale for 550,000.
Bucket change.
Very good. Yeah, the next item, emerging technology services, this was a suggestion that, is the town interested in embracing the, fundamentally, the county's IT department, and I don't see that as, you know, we have a very significant and highly professional IT operation, and we're happy to collaborate with them where it's appropriate, but we don't need to substitute one for the other.
A quick question on that. Part of the proposal includes buying power on technology, so...
Yeah, I saw that under the previous slide, collaborative purchasing.
Yeah.
But I agree.
So, you might just want to clarify that because I'm not sure that the way the survey was, was written really was inclusive enough, so maybe it's not...
Happy to do so, yeah, good point.
Move support of this slide.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Now, moving into Part 2, the first segment of that is the Cape Cod Commission. I'm just responding that we're reasonably familiar with their services, the bullet points there are key ones, in my opinion, 208 Planning, Land Use Planning, Housing, actually should be E-Permitting and Performance Management, that we are working with them, and I have my little editorial comment at the bottom that respectfully suggesting, urging cost containment with the Cape Cod Commission staff. From time to time, we have experienced situations, I think the board is aware, where we've had staff members from the Cape Cod Commission embarking on performing services without the knowledge of the Board of Selectmen or the Town Manager's Office, which has been awkward.
And I think maybe to flesh that out in terms of not just cost containment, because that seems to suggest it's too expensive, but to suggest, you know, advanced coordination, that there be kind of a line of coordination in terms of literally have an agreement that the town manager approves, or something along those lines.
Project initiative qualifications, you know, or...
Right.
Approval, yeah.
Something, approval, yeah.
That would be a great suggestion.
Happy to do that. Guess I'm showing my own bias that, based on my somewhat limited experience, occasionally when staff members are creeping into areas and not communicating, it's because...
Well, there's a lack of coordination, there's duplication of effort, or there's effort, but that's, that's really not in conjunction with the strategic planning or the planning board, or it just, it needs to be coordinated. That's certainly something that can be worked on.
Thank you.
Move support of that slide.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Still on Part 2, Department of Human Services, they're involved. Again, these are just key bullet points that I pulled out. Senior Services Planning, the Home Program, just housing assistance and substance abuse, all items very important to the town of Falmouth. The Resource Development Office, they perform some limited grant writing oversight and support, that's what I'm advocating. In general, we don't need a lot of help with grant writing, and there's always the concern that someone, someone or some entity moves in the direction of seeking a grant for which we haven't really had an appropriate review. And I know the board is fully understanding of that, working with the Finance Committee as well, so that's why I talk about placing limits on that.
This is really a continuation of the previous slide.
Correct. Should that approval be continued?
It's already included, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I see.
Now, moving to Part 3, Barnstable, Part 3 of Barnstable County Services, the Department of Health and Environment, in my judgment, all of the services that I have seen coming out of that functional area are very important to the town, and I certainly recommend that that be continued as very important. The Emergency Preparedness Division, those local services are critical importance to us, emergency operations, the County Fire Academy training, which we utilize regularly, I see as highly important as well.
Next slide?
There's another slide on it, yes. The, the next piece of that is a Cape Cod Cooperative Extension. They have a number of important programs we utilize, shellfish and aquaculture, coastal erosion and flood management, tick-borne disease intervention and prevention, food safety, nutrition, and horticulture, agriculture, 4H youth programs, and recycling and solid waste, all of which we utilize in various forms and, and we value.
Move support of those two slides?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great.
And it's scribbled to the board, I will so transmit that information...
Please do, that's a lot of work.
On behalf of Barnstable County, thank you for...
Thank you, that's great.
The board's investment of time and review and support.
That's great leadership.
Happy to do that.
Appreciate that. Okay, next, we have an announcement for the next quarter of Selectmen's meeting schedules, and we're starting with November. Are there any particular days folks know they're not available? And otherwise, why don't we just go through and see what makes sense, starting with town meeting on Monday, November 6?
Well, we know we're going to meet before those two weeks.
You have a shortened meeting, a couple of them at least that week.
Right. And then the next, the next Monday comes with Veterans Day on the 11th. Is that one that we will take off?
You mean the 13th?
Right.
The 13th?
I would...
Yeah, we meet on the 20th.
All right. So, the next meeting will be on the 20th, Monday, November 20. The week after, that is the 27th, which follows right after Thanksgiving, so I think that makes sense to tab off. And I just kind of want to pause and, and say, well, we already have planned a pretty substantial joint meeting coming up as well during this schedule, maybe right before, Julian, so that'll have to be...
October 14.
October 14.
Right.
So, maybe just make note of that before we get too much past it.
And that's the joint meeting with whom?
So, quite a list.
Planning Board, Conservation Commission, ZBA...
Health.
Health.
Oh, great.
And I may have forgotten someone.
And can you remind me, is that going to be at...
That will be here because we have a difficulty finding an appropriately-sized venue that would work. Diane spent quite a bit of time following up various leads, so we will, we're planning on adapting this room to make it work.
Okay. And what time are we going to start that off? Is it going to be the early morning again, like we did?
Early morning Saturday, probably 8:30, subject to your confirming that.
Yep, great.
I'm sorry, so when is that, on the 16th?
The 14th of October?
October 14.
Saturday, October 14.
Right.
Excuse me.
Yeah, sorry.
No, we jumped, we were jumping around.
Probably 8:30 till maybe three hours, kind of thing.
Okay.
Great. Okay, the next is, would be December 4. After that...
I assume you want the 18th?
Would be the 18th, correct. And that takes us through the end of the year, and then looking at...
Always ask for an early one in January so we can get the budget to you, have you look at it over two meetings, you recall, so it's, January's always a little daunting in that first few weeks.
So, you're recommending the 2nd and the 8th?
Yeah, the 2nd to present it to you, and the 8th for you to deliberate and act upon it.
I will not be here on the 2nd of January, be gone for, that'll be, when I come back that night, but coming back from Ireland, I don't think, no.
We'll email it to you.
Okay, I'll review it while I'm there, don't worry.
Okay, so the 2nd and the 8th, and after that, the 22nd.
That's as far as we've suggested you go.
Right.
Sorry, can we just, so, the 2nd?
The 2nd, the 8th, and the 22nd.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to call to everyone's attention, the MMA Annual Meeting, I think they've opened sign-ins, so, you know, I'm still, every year I try to organize this, so we only have to all do it once, but they do have a group signup, so just bear that in mind, if you do want to go, let the town manager know as soon as possible, and I'm sure Diane will coordinate that. 19th and 20th, Friday, Saturday.
Right, oh, I see, on our thing here.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so, Sam?
I'll be going again.
Great. All right, now, we have some minutes to review. The first one is for Monday, August 28, Executive Session.
I move approval of those minutes and not release?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have Executive Session 2, Monday, August 28, 2017.
Item of approval and release?
And release?
We're still on to it with the second item. We're getting close, but not quite yet.
I would amend that to not to release, at least.
Not to release?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, next, I think just before we go to individual Selectmen's reports, I want to take the opportunity to make an announcement with respect to today's executive session earlier. Item 2, the collective bargaining, we have voted terms and conditions of contracts for DPW, ASME Unit C, and the Fire Department Unions. That's all great news and great work on the part of the staff, including the Assistant Town Manager, and, as well as Denise did a terrific job. Secondarily, I think that's, that's the only one.
Yeah.
That's the only one, great, thank you. Individual Selectmen Reports. Doug?
So, I was in attendance of the Water Quality Management Committee meeting this week, and I mentioned to them that now that we've got all of our TMDLs for most of our imballments and most of the planning is done, what are the implementation steps now? What kind of action steps could they take? And I suggested that some of these areas that are, obviously could use some stormwater management, like T Ticket Path, and, you know, Rivers End Road, I recently noticed that there's an old boat landing, the asphalt doesn't extend into the water, but there's three roadways that converge to a boat landing that runs right down into the bay, and it seems like it could be easily managed by maybe one of those swales, since DPW does. And the question came up, how does that get initiated? And I said to them, maybe they should recommend that we take this action, and they said, you know, we recommend it, you know, take it, do it. So how would we initiate a project like that? And, you know, I mean, we see these things and they're obvious.
So I think, you know, in getting ready for not this coming Town Meeting, but the next one, then we'd probably ask for a report to be forwarded, you know, by the committee with recommendations, and then forward that to the Town Manager for consideration and ultimately presentation to the Board. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Bless you. Sam?
Can I ask that we expand and basically get a status report on our plans to try to meet those NPDES, whatever that acronym turns out to be?
Right.
Because I know they postponed the beginning of the enforcement, but I'd like to, I know that staff has been at some of these meetings, that I've been there with them, but I'd like to know where we stand in terms of preparing to meet those stormwater runoff management requirements, so that we can combine that.
Ray is the appointed member of the Water Quality Collaborative at this point. Maybe he could work with the committee in terms of recommendations and start making reports. I know that would be, you know, a substantial undertaking, but maybe get his input on what would be the best way to move that.
I know the DPW engineering staff has, like, 800 points of concern that they've already mapped, so they've got.
Can you give a report on that?
Yeah.
They've got a good start on the reporting.
Right.
We want to see how we can start to implement before the state comes, so when they do come, we can say, you know, this is what we're working on.
Absolutely.
And you would think that some of that work would be reflected in that operating
budget coming up at the beginning of next year.
Which means this is, I think that's why this is a good time.
There's not some money in the operating budget for this. The fact that it's been delayed is sort of vaccine, because the state and the feds are never quite seem to be in sync.
But it's a problem we have to address anyway. It's, you know, it's polluting our estuaries, so it's just only makes sense for us to just go ahead and jump on it, start doing what we know is going to have to happen anyway.
And I'll tell you, I'll tell you what triggered it, is I've been noticing an improvement in Great Bay, over on my side on Shorewood, partly probably because the improvement of septic system at the Falmouth Port.
Yep.
And of course, we're hoping for a lot of improvement now with this new sewer. But when I went and had a new pond watch partner over at Rivers End, and we went down to use his rowboat, I said, wow, the algae was really bad there, the whole area, and he says, yeah, it's as bad as it ever was, and it's that little pocket of a problem area that which seems to be exacerbated by this runoff.
We've had a lot more rain this summer.
Mm-hmm.
Sam, report?
Oh, I, actually, been a number of meetings canceled, other groups that I VA's with, and I've missed a couple because of other conflicts, so I have nothing to report. Well, other than having attended the 9/11 commemoration this morning at the Fire Department, which is really a great opportunity for us to take some time to remember and show our appreciation for the sacrifices that were made by so many fire and rescue and police, and many citizens, too, in response to the 9/11 attack on the World Trade Center, and then also, of course, the Pentagon attacks as well.
Megan?
Not specific committee reports, because a lot of those are sort of some, I think we'll be touching base on some of those in upcoming meetings, but just really impressed the start of the school week. My son's in his last year at Lawrence, and just in going ahead of the start of school to get his schedule, just always so impressed by, you know, teachers who are there for long hours, getting the school ready, the school looked fabulous, everyone was incredibly helpful, you know, they're having a lot of folks as they're trying to prepare, coming in and out of the school, getting schedules, asking questions, and we just, I'm always reminded of just what a really wonderful staff we have in our school systems, and just how welcoming, you know, to have wide open doors when we know people are at their busiest, you know, crunching to get it done, and, you know, just completely, you're greeted by the principal, you know, and then by the other staff, so I think just a great first week and heading into the second, so.
And even seeing Nancy Taylor at the 9/11 ceremony this morning, I mean, it's just amazing this beginning of the school year. The other thing, Julian and I both attended the Old Stone Dock Association Annual Meeting, and, you know, another great neighborhood association that really gets a lot done, works well with the town, and gives scholarships, so I'm sure Julian will add more to that. Doug, anything you want to mention? Julian?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. A couple summary items. I was indeed, yeah, pleased to, my wife and I, to attend the Old Stone Dock Gathering this past Sunday, and as Madam Chair mentioned, they're a terrific group, very active, and very giving back to the community, and it's always a pleasure to join them and have a little bit of a dialogue with them, and get some good feedback on some things that are working, and some suggestions that they have for some changes, so it's something we always look forward to, so.
And a few other department heads are even invited and speak, and so, great working relationship.
Very good, indeed. Also, just a couple notes, I wanted to, just a reminder to the Board that it's your next meeting on the 25th, two weeks hence, we'll be asking the Board to consider voting to establish the final betterments for the Little Pond Sewer Project. This is the time that needs to be done, in order to be properly prepared and working with the Assessors' Office. Keep in mind, you've already established the maximum betterment unit, you'll recall that, at an earlier meeting, and the good news, as you know, is that the presentation and recommendation will involve a significant reduction in the betterment amount, so it's really good news to all those affected, given that the project's been proceeding on time and within the available funds. And as a reminder, this is not including that amount to equalize the grinder pump and the gravity pump, that is yet to come, because we have another major project in the pipeline, the Born's Pond widening, that has to be dealt with before we can come up with the appropriate cost amount, and also the fact that over half of the local connections in Little Pond Sewer Service area are not yet made. So we want to really see how that plays out, what those costs are, and be able to properly account for those and report back to the Board. But that will be coming, we haven't forgotten about it, and I know the Board is committed to it, that's part of your policy, and I wanted to underscore that, but the betterments will be coming your way, as has been anticipated. Also, Selectmen will recall that we've been funded by the state for participation in what we call the MVP Program, and this program will support Falmouth in completing a comprehensive baseline climate change and natural hazard vulnerability assessment, as well as developing prioritized actions for dealing with priority hazards. And as part of the process, the town must designate what we call, what the state calls a core team, to focus our work in this regard, and with the concurrence of the Board, I would like to suggest that this core team include members of the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee, as well as staff members, Jennifer McKay, Bob Shea, Brian Curry, Jim McLaughlin, and in all likelihood represented from the Town Manager's Office. I have already been in touch with Charlie McCaffrey, who chairs the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee, as you know, and he has wholeheartedly agreed to be a part of this along with members of his committee, and I would suggest, I don't want to be too bold, but would suggest, of course, Selectmen Doug Brown has been heavily involved in the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee, and I would hope that he would be maintaining his liaison work and therefore involved in this core team as well, if it wouldn't be deemed to be inappropriate for me to so suggest.
I think that would be terrific.
Be happy to do that.
Great, thank you.
And I will proceed in that manner, if it's agreeable to the Board. Thank you. Also, as part of standard procedure, Marine and Environmental Services will be bringing their annual shellfish regulations, the update for the coming year, to the Selectmen. Again, it's your next meeting, two weeks hence, asking for your consideration for vote, which you do every year. I'm advised by Chuck Martenson, there are no substantive changes proposed, other than unnecessary adjustments in the calendar opening and closing dates, and as Madam Chair has suggested, we'll be posting these annual draft regulations on the town website for public review in advance, so it's a great suggestion. Thank you, Sue, for that. And I also want to thank Chief Mike Small and firefighters, and also Chief Dunn and all the Police Department. We had the heavy participation by both police and fire, and many others, of course, as has been noted, at the annual solemn ceremony for September 11th, and I could just say, as someone who has viewed this at different locations in the Commonwealth, quite frankly, most municipalities have ceased to have an annual ceremony, which I think is regrettable for September 11th. The previous community I was in did maintain it every year, and I'm delighted to see that Falmouth does that as well. I think it's an important thing for us to remember, including communication with young people, many of whom we had, as has been noted, at our ceremony earlier today, so we're pleased to be able to participate and be part of that solemn observance. And I thank Board members for your comments and support on a variety of things tonight, and we'll probably be equally action-packed on the 25th. That concludes my report.
Thanks to our announcement of looking for people for the Senior Senator Committee, we just got a nice volunteer with an excellent background.
Terrific, terrific.
Quick turnover.
Is there a motion?
Move for your turn.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
And you'll forward that to the Town Manager?
Yes, sir.[1676.13]